All right, there we are. So this is the January 26, 2021, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The chair is Jeff Pritchard. Tonight, the Office of Planning and Development staff are Bruce Loughran, Diane Glombowski, Deb Gilott, and me, Deb Jones. There are two opportunities to address the commission tonight. We do have a public hearing and you can address the commission regarding that subject if you like. You do need to raise your hand in order to be recognized. To do that on an Apple device, you can find the hand icon at the top. On a PC, it's at the bottom. If you're on a phone, it is star nine. There's also after the hearing, there's also public communications where you can address the commission on items other than the subdivision application.
Okay. So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item of business is a roll call. I see everybody here except for Steve Hodacheck. So we have our regular members and we have a quorum. Next, we have as a public hearing for subdivision on 55 Star Street. If they, we have the applicant here.
Yeah, it looks like the applicants are here. I can promote them.
Why don't you promote them? We'll start with the applicants, go through them, staff, and then open up the public hearing for.
Do you want to read the legal ad first?
Oh, yes, that's a good idea. Yes, Diane. Yeah, Hal, can you read the legal ad?
Do I have it?
Yeah, it was part of your agenda package.
It would be the first side. It's the first item after the agenda.
Yeah, I got. No. Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on January 26, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Virtually via Zoom platform to hear the following subdivision of land of 55 Star LLC, creating three residential lots within the coastal area management boundary on a 0.96 acre parcel of land at 55 Star Street. The parcel is identified as 261914338327 when a plan entitled 55 Star Street subdivision is zooming link will be posted to the town's website. Meeting calendar or can be attended by visiting www.zoom Wes webinar ID 85014401604, passcode 063436. Or by phone. 13017158592. Applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department, 134 Groton Long Point Road dated this 15th day of January 2021 at Groton, Connecticut. Signed Jeffrey Pritchard.
All right, then we can move on to the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to quickly summarize.
I'll go ahead.
How we run the, the, the meeting or the public hearing is we'll listen to the applicant. Then the staff can make their presentation. And then we'll open it up to the public for any of their comments, commission comments would follow and keep repeating the, and the applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to any of the questions that are raised and continue the cycle through that until every, all the items are responded to before we close the hearing. So go ahead and if you say your name and we work for your address.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. My name is Bill Sweeney. I am a partner and a land use attorney with the law firm of Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut. And it certainly is a pleasure to be here tonight with you. I represent an entity known as 55 Star Street LLC, which is a real estate holding company owned by the Gallagher family. My client has submitted to you an application for a three lot subdivision of land located at 55 Star Street in Groton, along with an ancillary coastal site plan review because of its location within the coastal management area. Joining me tonight is Greg Fettis. He's on the call. You can might see him lower on your screen. Greg is the project engineer. And I think we may have some people who may not be displayed from the Gallagher family who are here as well. The Gallaghers live downstate, but they have visited and vacationed in Mystic for many years. They fell in love with Mystic. And when they had an opportunity to purchase the property that's before you tonight on Star Street last year, they jumped at the chance to acquire the site. Their son, Graham Gallagher, is an experienced residential developer. And they saw an opportunity to subdivide this oversized residential lot and to develop some quality homes which will be architecturally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood on Star Street. Greg is going to display in a few moments, the subdivision plans, and he's going to go through them with you in detail. But I want to just touch on a few key items before we present the plans. Because I think that it's important for your consideration this evening. As an initial item, this is a public hearing and I want to note for the record tonight that notice has been provided to all property owners within 150 feet of the subdivision per your regulations. And we've certified that notice with Mr. Loughran as well, again, consistent with your regulations. The property that we're going to be talking about tonight, 55 Star Street encompasses 41,695 square feet, which makes it one of the larger parcels in that neighborhood. And it's more than three times the minimum lot size of 12,000 feet, which is required in the underlying RS 12 zoning district in which it lies. We're going to be proposing to remove an existing house on the property to allow and to facilitate the creation of the three lots that Mr. Fettis is going to show you. What's important to note, and I note this for the record, is each of the lots that we're going to show you meets or exceeds the minimal bulk and dimensional requirements for new residential lots in the RS 12 district. I also want to note for the record, because I think there was some confusion with some neighbors. This site is not located within the Mystic Historic District. It's outside of that district. And it's therefore not subject to the jurisdiction of that commission. The three lots that we're going to show you all are served by public water and sewer underground utilities. They're each accessed from a curb cut from Star Street. And they'll, there is sufficient sightlines to each driveway. Mr. Fettis will show you some of the trees that we'll be preserving along Star Street, mature trees that will be preserving. And we're also keeping the majority of the stone walls that ring the perimeter of the property to make sure that we keep the character of the property appropriate. As I said, there is an ancillary coastal site plan review with this project. We're within the coastal area management zone associated with the river. Mr. Fettis will talk a little bit about some of the things that he's done, including the addition of rain gardens to the subdivision plan to handle any impervious surfaces that we're creating. There will be two additional items that you'll need to consider tonight as you look at this subdivision plan. The first is we have requested a waiver of the sidewalk requirement. There are no sidewalks whatsoever on Star Street. And there, there are really little to no sidewalks in the surrounding neighborhood. And so we've asked for that waiver as part of our application. And then finally, this is a very small subdivision. Again, I think as, as Mr. Zod read in the, in the call for the meeting, this is less than an acre, the property. Really, a subdivision this size really doesn't warrant a dedication of actual open space. But we are proposing a fee in lieu of open space in the amount of $21,500, which is based on our appraisal of the property and it's pre-subdivision condition. That 21,5 can then go in for other open space activities elsewhere in the community. So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Fettis to share the subdivision plan. And then be able and go through it and walk you through it. And then I'll come back with just some concluding remarks. Thank you. Mr. Fettis?
Yes, good. A good evening. My name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering LLC, an office at 70 Est Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Professional engineer license in the state of Connecticut. I'm going to share the subdivision plan and then I'll just go through it. Of sheet by sheet, but we'll spend a little more time on certain sheets just to go through the specifics of the subdivision. Everyone can see that, right?
Yes.
So they, you know, as Mr. Sweeney stated, 55 Star LLC is the kind of the name of the subdivision. The applicant is 55 Star LLC also. But it is a three lot subdivision of just under an acre of land on Star Street. You can see the stone walls basically run on both sides of an easement that runs partially on our land and partially on the adjacent properties. But access is, I think, two or three properties to the rear. We do have access off of that. It's limited and I'll let, if there's any questions regarding that, I'll let Mr. Sweeney speak directly to that after. But we don't, we're not proposing to really use that access at all for access to these three lots. Each lot has an individual driveway. The sheet two of eight is the property survey showing the division. So it shows existing conditions, which, which is the existing house, existing driveway, all trees over a certain size, I believe it was six inches that are currently on the property. It also shows the zoning requirement table. I'm not just going to blow that up a little bit so everyone can see it. So as Mr. Sweeney stated, we do meet all the requirements. The minimum lot size is 12,000. Lots, you could see the lots, one, two, and three are 13,000 plus, 16,000 plus, and 12,000 plus. Lot two, we have to take off the private access way off of Star Street. So that reduces the square footage down to 14, just over 14,000, which still meets the 12,000 square, square foot requirement. Again, minimum widths are 60 feet and then 25 feet for a rear lot. So we do meet all of those also. And we did show, and I'm going to, I'm going to move to sheet. I'm going to, this is, I'm going to come, I'm going to move to sheet four for a second, which shows the proposed. Shows the proposed houses. These are basically just feasibility houses. They're not the actual houses that are going to be built. It's just to show the commission and, and it's required by the regulations that we show a house that can fit and meet all the requirements on the lot. So on each of the lots. So the specific, again, the zoning tables on this sheet also. You could see the, the front yards. The front yard, side yard, and rear yards are 25, 12, and 25 respectively. You can see that we meet all those requirements with the houses shown on this sheet. We also show the building map. So I'm building coverage of 30% or well under the actual allowed building coverage, which is, which is 30, we're at 14, 2, 10, 6, and 14, 5. The building height will be less than 30. That's required. We're not required to show elevations of the buildings we're proposing, but we will be under that requirement. And again, the minimum lot area per dwelling, it's only have one dwelling on each lot. Those numbers are basically the same as the lot area or lot size. I'm going to flip back to the demolition plan is important because what we're trying to do here is save any of the trees along the frontage. There's a couple that we have to remove because of their interfere with driveways. And we, we do have a street tree required requirement. So we do have to supplement and I'll get to the, the plan that shows that. Next. So we are trying to save trees along the frontage. We are trying to save as much of the stone wall along the frontage. We only took out the minimal required to bring in driveways. The, the stone wall along the western property line will remain as is. The stone wall that's kind of set within our property on the eastern property line will remain as is. And again, trees where we can, we, we are keeping them. So there's a couple in the backyard that will be keeping a couple, that a couple that will have to be, you know, some of them will have to be removed because of grading and house placement. But any mature, healthy trees, we're going to try our best to keep. So again, the site development plan, get driveways coming off of Star Street are 12 feet wide. And then they widen up to, for each of the more of the frontage houses. And then the rear lot is 12 foot wide all the way back. And again, so all access will be on Star Street. This hatched area on the eastern side of the property is an easement for the properties in the back. And again, this also shows the one proposed street tree to supplement. So we meet the street, street tree requirement of every 50 feet. This plan also shows three rain gardens, one for each lot. This will take basically the first inch of rainfall from the roofs, which is kind of a standard engineering practice in the coastal area. Standard kind of everywhere, but it's very prominent in the coastal area management part of town. Sheet five of eight is the grading plan, grading and utility plan, which basically shows sewer individuals were reusing the sewer for one of the properties. And then we'll be adding two sewer connections and water connections for the homes. Then it shows the proposed grading, which again is basically grading away from the properties to the east and the west. And then the property to the rear of, of our development is up gradient of our, our, our entire development. So there's no issue there with runoff. Erosion control sediment control plan. Then kind of standard in and out of the cam zone. But we do have anti-tracking pads for each of the homes. We have cell fence down gradient of all the development to keep any erosion sediment, you know, under control and onsite or prevented from going on to Star Street. We also show stockpile areas on each of the lots. And again, we tried to preserve as much of the existing trees as we could. Several up front and then a couple in the rear of the property. And the stone walls again to the east and west. And then just the details required by Public Works are calculations for building coverage and impervious coverage. Both existing and proposed. And then the rain garden calculations showing the first inch of rainfall captured and stored and infiltrated into the ground. And again, more details required by Public Works for sewer connections, driveways and so forth. And I think that's. Yeah, I think that's basically it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I'll turn it over to our staff.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Loughran from the Office of Planning and Development Services. Attorney Sweeney and Mr. Fettis went over most everything pretty conferencively, but I have a couple of things to, to add and kind of go over, update all the high points. First off, the mailings are in order. We did receive those. And they are in accordance with our requirements for notifications. We held a staff review meeting on this back in December of last year. Public Works was present, the fire marshal, on the zoning official were also there and they were provided comments. And the applicant addressed them and incorporated them to the plans that you see tonight. You know, like, like, like attorneys, we mentioned, this is in an RS 12 zoning district. There's currently 41,000 square feet. Because of the R12 zoning district, you know, each lot is required to have at least 12,000 square feet. The proposal right here does show more than 12,000 square feet for each one of the lots. Required road frontage is 25 feet and the lot width is measured at the front yard setback line. So each one of these lots has at least 25 feet of frontage and 60 feet for a lot width. So it does meet that zoning requirement as well. This is, this property is adjacent to an historic district, but it is not located in an historic district. It's an historic district just to the east of the property and a little farther to the south and also farther to the west. But this particular property is now located within historic district. It is located in the coastal area management boundary or within the boundary. Coastal site plan application was submitted with the application. This property is located about 471 feet approximately from the coastal jurisdiction, jurisdiction line that it is associated with the Mystic River to the east. The only waiver that is being requested is the sidewalk waiver that was explained earlier on. There's no sidewalks on Star Street anywhere there. Some of the local roads in the area have a sidewalk on one side of the road, but not in the immediate vicinity of this proposal. As they mentioned in, in lieu of, in open space requirement, they are requesting to count a fee of 10% of the fair market value of the property. The property was appraised at $215,000 and that's the appraisal of the property, not the structure on the site. It passed the appraisal along to the town tax assessor. She reviewed it and she didn't have any concerns with the proposal and she thought that the comparable sales that were used to evaluate the, the value were, were actually very good. And she was supportive of the evaluation. As Mr. Fettis mentioned, you know, it was, it's important to preserve the, the stone wall and those existing mature trees along Star Street. That will do a lot to kind of preserve the street scape that is currently there. Originally, the application came in with much wider driveways that would have eliminated a little more of the stone walls, probably limited a few more of those street trees out front. Staff requested that the driveways be reduced to 12 feet. And the applicant did address that and it looks like there's minimal removal of, of the trees and the stone wall just for one driveway access on, looks like proposed lot number one. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add right now. I would turn it back over to the chairman.
Okay, so I'll open it up if there anyone in the public wishes to address us. We did receive two letters from neighbors that were, should have been sent out to everybody this afternoon. I told them everybody got a copy of those and I've read them. So is there anyone in the public that would like to address the commission tonight?
Yes, there are. Right now, there's three people that have raised their hand. I'll call on the first one, Madeline Carney. And if you can unmute yourself there.
Hi.
So.
All right, is there, should we turn on our camera?
You can or you don't have to either way.
But I should state your name and address for the record.
Well, my name is Madeline Carney. I'm actually just the computer messenger for John Carney at 51 Star Street.
Oh, it's who speaks. It's who is speaking. That's, that's who we need the name for.
So if I could then speak, my name is Stephen Carney and I'm sitting here with four angry neighborhood residents. And I was the first one to ask that my hand be raised. And that was at the very, very, very beginning of Mr. Sweeney's presentation.
Would you state your address for the?
At 18 Borough Street in Mystic section of Groton.
Okay, thank you.
About three quarters of a mile from the.
Oh, that's, no, it's just for the record.
And so I raised my hand at the very, very beginning because the objection of the adjacent property owners is being expressed and being talked about and is a subject of a great deal of anger is that they say they did not get proper notice. And they object to everything that's happened already tonight. They say it was not appropriate to have this hearing because there was not appropriate notice. And for Mr. Sweeney to just say there was notice and be able to just blast through is just fundamentally unfair to these people and myself who are upset about this project.
Okay.
I would like there to be a record that, no, we don't just agree that notice was proper, say notice was improper, particularly during a pandemic, particularly if something requires a signature during a pandemic on a holiday weekend. It, it just smacks of a situation where it's not looking to be candid and fundamentally fair. And so when we hear things like, we'll try our best to keep the trees. We don't have to show you what the height of the houses is going to be, but don't worry, it's going to be in keeping. It starts from a position where people are just not comfortable and would assert that the ordinances, the regulations so far have already just not been complied with. And would like there to be a record of that. And I think that my dad's letter and I think Ms. LaBelle has also indicated a strong objection to the hearing even taking place.
But are you disputing that someone signed for receipt of the notice?
No, we're disputing that it was set in a manner in which notice could be reasonably have been gotten in a manner that a person would have reasonable opportunity to hire a lawyer, obtain the plans and make a reasoned decision as to how they want to proceed. And I think that that's the purpose of the regulations. And so therefore we're not followed.
Okay. Who's next, Diane?
So I have other things I want to.
Oh, go ahead.
But the first would be that the letter that my father wrote was John Carney. I would like to make sure that that's part of the record. I don't think it's worth wasting people's time and reading it. But would like to say that in spite of the fact that this is not in the historic district, it is adjacent to the historic district. And at least some of the stone wall that is being talked about, I would think is the boundary of the stone of, of the historic district. Honestly, a lot of things that are being thrown out, people that are sitting around the table that I'm sitting at are scratching their heads. They don't understand what's being said. It just has not been the opportunity to talk and discuss and saying, well, what is this? Is this stone wall that's along the right of way being looked to be, to be changed or manipulated in some sort of way? And isn't that part of the historic district? And people are saying, they just don't know. It's all come too, too quickly for them. In, in addition, feeling that this is not appropriate to the neighborhood. And it even seems like Stafford just dismissive of the idea that there needs to be a sidewalk. Well, if you spend time in this neighborhood, you'll see that this is a side, this is a neighborhood that teams with walkers. And all around the country, I'm, I was surprised by the sidewalk requirement being eliminated. I didn't realize that. But all around the country, communities are trying to be like Mystic and make themselves into walking communities. And so when new construction projects are done, I assume that's why we have a sidewalk requirement and that we're looking. requirement and that we're looking to expand the sidewalks that are quite extensive in this neighborhood and be moving into other parts that aren't as well sidewalk. I've worked with police officers a lot and I've heard lots of police officers say they never took a pedestrian's body off of the sidewalk. It's always in the middle of the street when it's car versus pedestrian. A sidewalk requirement should never be waived, in my strong opinion, in this town. But more importantly, it's just not in keeping with the neighborhood. That it's not appropriate to shove three lots into what has been for these sixty years, one lot. It's not what this neighborhood is all about. And this is an important part of Mystic where we are butting up against the nature preserve of the meadow across the street. And I would just strongly assert that this is not an improvement for the town of Groton or the section of Mystic. And is a very, very large detriment to the area. I also, when I hear that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the lot now, I don't think that that's a fair appraisal. And it's hard for me to believe that this sort of money is being sent, spent on a lot that is only two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And I would ask that that be looked at. I would say that if you could feel comfortable in squeezing houses into every spare third of an acre in this part of town, then you start to have a town that doesn't look like it looks now. And this would set a horrible precedent. When I look across the street to the meadow, I don't know how many houses Mr. Sweeney would feel could be squeezed there, but it's a lot. And it would be giving Mystic a very, very different character than it has right now. I guess that's all I'd like to say for the time being, but I would like to make sure that my dad's letter is part of the record.
That should be part of the record since we've identified it as being received. Right, if you have nothing else, then Diane, you could call on the next person.
Next person is Peter Troop. Troop. Can you unmute yourself to speak, Mr. Troop?
Let me, okay, there we go. Very good. Now I figured out how to do it.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Peter Troop. I'm the husband of Kathy Yates and we own the property at ninety nine River Road, which abuts the east side of this property that's being discussed. One question I have of city staff is regarding what I once understood to be a wetlands designation for that particular property. I'm surprised that nothing's been said about that. Could someone reference or help me understand if that was the case at some point in time? And if that, if that changed at any certain point? That's one question I have. The second question I have is about the status of our tree. We have, we have the third tallest sequoia tree in the state of Connecticut that's adjacent to the stone wall that's there on the east side of their property. Sequoias have a root structure that is close to the surface. And we'd be very concerned about potential threat or damage to the sequoia from construction on the, on the west side of that wall. It's a heritage tree within the state of Connecticut, anticipated as such by the state. So those are the two points I had to make. My question about, about the status of the wetlands, is somebody from city staff there able to address that?
Oh, Greg, do you know what, is there's wetlands on the property?
There's no wetlands on our property.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think he asked about the property across the street, just to the north there. And there is a water course that runs through the middle of that property to the north. But it's further than a hundred and fifty feet away from this property. So it's, so this property is not located within a regulated well there. But there is wetlands to the north. It's just their way then would be required for a well and review.
All right, thanks. Would you call him the next person, Diane?
Yes. Peter Roper. If you can unmute yourself.
Hey, I found it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Hello, members of the planning commission, zoning commission and staff and public. First of all, my name is Peter Roper, I live at two ten Pequot Avenue, Mystic. I'd like to thank you on the commission for your, your time. I spent twenty four years on your side of the table or the Zoom, depending how you look at it. And I appreciate the time you put in for this. Again, I'm Peter Roper, but I'm actually representing a power attorney for Barbara B. Nelson, who lives at seventy three Star Street next door to this proposal. As her caregiver and friend, I can tell you she loves her house, lot, view and neighborhood. When she heard the rumors of a change to fifty five she wanted to let you know her feelings. She's ninety one, has been at LM Hospital with COVID nineteen in the Sharon Healthcare Center until this past Sunday. When she came home after that, almost the first thing she asked me was what was happening next door? I agree with the letter submitted by John J. Carney at fifty one Star Street, Olga LaBella, LaBella at forty three Star Street. I also wasn't able to get the letter for this proposal until the nineteenth because of the holiday and the notice came on the weekend, so. It does seem like the time was shortened here for people to address this. I just want to note, if you look at the GIS map that came with this proposal, showing the, your butters. This came from the applicant. You see that there are very few, if any, lots anywhere on the map that are small and cramped as the proposals the proposed lots are going to be. The entire lot is point ninety six acres, so dividing it by three makes pretty small lots, in my opinion, for this neighborhood. This creates a situation I'll be keeping with the whole area. It's interesting to note that the people that bought this property have visited Mystic and love Mystic and jumped at the chance to grab this property. Well, now they're changing it and this is one step in changing Mystic to me. I can't imagine they love Mystic because of lots and houses being on top of each other. I hope that the purchaser, now the applicant, was not promised approval for this plan when he was buying the property fifty five Star Street. He knew he was buying a single family lot. It's a beautiful lot, solid house, both appropriate to the neighborhood. Please don't approve this serious unnecessary intensification and degradation of a fine Mystic neighborhood. Peter Roper for Barbara B. Nelson. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Is anyone else? Have their hand raised, Diane?
Muted, Diane.
Hello?
Yes. Says Kathy.
Yeah, it looks like Diane has recognized Kathy Yates.
Kathy Yates, yeah. Yeah, I saw her for once. I could see the person. Go ahead, Kathy, if you want to.
Thank you. So that was my husband, Peter Troop, that was on just a moment ago.
So you do state your name and name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Kathleen Yates. And I'm the owner of the property at ninety nine River Road. And I should say that we did get a notification of this hearing, but we don't have any notification of what actually is being planned. The, the only information we have is what we've heard tonight and are both confused about what's being proposed in terms of the development, but also what the timing is. And I'm wondering if you can ensure that we get proper notification of all of this.
Well, weren't, were you notified?
No. Well, we did get a letter about this particular hearing, but nothing else virtually. So how is one supposed to get the information that I can kind of see on my Zoom screen? But it's very small and it's very difficult for us to interpret. How do I get complete information about what's being proposed?
Well, what is the letter state? I've never seen one of these letters, but what does it state?
It says that there is a hearing to take place on today's date and I can access the information about how to dial in at www.agendasuite.org, which is what I did and then I got a Zoom link.
Okay, there's nothing referenced to go to the town website or who to call in town hall? Is what you're saying?
It's saying, you know, there's this hearing, there's a subdivision of land at fifty five Star Street. There's going to be this virtual meeting. This is how to get into it.
Okay.
So it's information about the meeting. It's not information about what's being planned.
Well, okay, but the applicant had made a presentation of what's planned. It went over.
And I'm saying that what I am able to see of that presentation on Zoom is very difficult for me to interpret. So is there a way I can get more complete information?
Can staff answer that?
Yeah, sure. I can answer that. This is Bruce Lofgren from the Office of Planning and Development Services. I believe somewhere in that packet that was mailed to you, it does provide a number to the town hall annex for you to call. And I was the staff planner on the project or am the staff planner on the project and I'd be happy to you know, have a hard copy of this printed out and left there for you, for you to pick up. You can also, you know, contact me through the website. I can email everything full size to you. Or you can call me anytime and I'm happy to answer any questions on the application.
Okay, can you give me that number?
Yeah, my, my direct line is eight six zero four four eight four zero eight eight.
I'm sorry, four zero eight eight?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name at the beginning?
My name is Bruce Lofgren.
Okay, I will follow up with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else, Diane?
It looks like Madeline Carney is still has the raised hand. Um. Oh, there's Joyce Springs, Spring Steel. I'll allow Joyce Spring Steel to walk.
Okay.
You've gone muted.
Hi, this is actually Peter Spring Steel.
Okay.
And I'm at one oh five Star Street, which is just west of this property. The next block up the hill. And I'm questioning the reasonableness here of creating a rear lot. Your regulations ask for twenty five foot frontage. And by creating this rear lot, you really don't have the twenty five foot frontage for that reared lot. That may be allowed, but I just don't think that's a reasonable thing to do on this situation where you have such a small lot. I think you're urbanizing the street. You've got four curb cuts there in a row and you got a fifth one up to the west that's not showing on the survey. So I think the spirit of your regulations is not really pushing for this type of a development where we've got rear lots and small frontages for that rear lot. So that's my comment and we think it's too dense. We'd be in support of a two lot subdivision here.
Anything else? All right, is there anyone else, Diane?
No, I don't see anybody else.
All right.
Diane, the only thing is that there, I know Madeline Carney had a few people there. I don't know if you want to maybe get a better opportunity to see if someone else there wanted to talk.
Okay.
We're good. Hi, sorry, just so you're aware, we have multiple people from the neighborhood using one computer together.
Okay.
So Olga LaBella would like to speak.
I'd like to address the, the committee. This is Olga LaBella. I live at forty three Star Street. And I want to first say how upset I am about this whole process that's going on. I feel that the notice that was sent out was done very poorly. I feel it was done underhandedly and I think your developer would like to get this on the way very quickly. We have not had, or especially myself, I've not had the opportunity to seek counsel. It's a big change to my life and it's a big change to this neighborhood. I am not going to just bow my head and say it's okay. I need to research further what my rights are. Right now, house number two is truly invading my own sense of privacy. I have lived here a number of years. I have put a lot of my, my life and my effort into this property and I highly, highly object to having house number two put on this subdivision. I don't like the idea of looking out my window every day and be looking at into someone else's bedroom or someone else's kitchen and not having any sense that I can live in peace and without gawking of others. I'd like, if at all possible, I'd like, my contribution would be to dismantle this whole project. I would like for the board to not make any decisions this evening, considering the fact that there is such a high majority that are not in favor of it. And we, personally, I would like to seek legal counsel.
Okay.
Madeline, is there anybody else there that would like to speak with your group?
Yes, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Sheila Gannon and I live at fifty five Clift Lane. And I'm here tonight to express my extreme displeasure with your plan. I object to it wholeheartedly and totally. I think it's a gross overuse of the land and the property. It's not in character with the neighborhood to squeeze three houses onto that piece of property. So I totally object to this application.
And John Carney would like to say a couple of words as well.
Okay.
Hello, I'm John Carney. I live just south of where this property is planned. I'm very dissatisfied with the layout.
What's your address?
I'm at fifty one Star Street.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Just three homes on this lot, which then, which borders across the way from the peace preserves. Just in such a significant change in the neighborhood's character. And it's just beyond belief that you would actually even consider this. That's all I have to say. Please change your minds.
Okay, Madeline, anybody else?
No, I think that's probably a fair group of the people who've assembled here today to speak. And I know there are neighbors who are away for the winter, who could not have gotten notice, it was the same way it was done in this neighborhood. Mr. Bligh, he was out in California. Mr. Blythe, he was out in California. We don't even have a cellphone number for him. He's right adjacent to this. We have no idea if he's got notice. So, but for the people who've had the chance to get together, I know in the summer, there was a man up on Star Lane who wanted to talk, but we never had a chance to talk to him either. The, the ending feeling is there wasn't enough time, there wasn't proper notice. There should be a do-over at some other, other time after people have a chance to hire a lawyer.
Okay, thank you.
We have no other people in the pub? Oh, do we? Has more?
No, we don't. We don't have anybody else that have raised their hand at this point.
Alright, so move on to open it up to commission members for any questions or comments. I'll start with you, Mike.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I just, I, I did read all of the letters that came along with it, and I've looked over the drawings. For staff, had, if this had been a free split, could that have, could that have, would that have been allowed on this property?
Well, I, I think the slot was already had a free split, but um, I believe with the three lots, you can't have a free.
No, I realize that. I just didn't know as if that would, would have been permitted.
Well, free split, I think can only be two lots, not three, so.
And it could only be done once.
Right, Mr. Sweeney can maybe answer that question. Depends when it was subdivided before or split off before.
Based on the preliminary research I did, again, Bill Sweeney, for the record. Based on the preliminary research, the property likely has a free split coming to it, but subdivision statutes here in the state of Connecticut and the subdivision regulations require a formal subdivision with the creation of three or more lots. That's the trigger for subdivision.
Yep, no. For staff, it had the, so if, I'm just trying to wonder how we came up with the $215,000 without the house. Is that the way we do it?
Yeah, it's always, it's always, the appraisal is based on the land value, so it would be the land value, not the value of the structure added.
So if the house were to, if the house were to remain on a subdivision like this, then you would not, you would just have the value calculated for the land only.
Correct.
That's right. It's the land pre-subdivision.
Land pre-subdivision, okay. Does this decision have to be made this evening?
Uh, no, it does not. The, I think the action date on it right now, they haven't had any extensions, but it is February 11th, and you do have one meeting on February 9th before that, that.
What, has our policy changed since with COVID? And I mean, I, I would suggest that communication in this world has gone downhill a little bit. And I'm wondering if we are taking that into consideration, or is, are we just working with our old, you know, the rules that we've always worked with?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I could maybe address the, the issue of notification.
Yes, go ahead.
If that's appropriate?
Yes.
Thanks. So your regulations are very clear about how notification is to be provided. And it's supposed to be provided by delivering notice to the US Post Office at least 10 days, but not more than 30 days before the hearing date. That, we've submitted evidence from the US Post Office that these, that this mailing was mailed out on January 14th, which is 12 days prior to today's hearing date. So we absolutely, 100% uncategorically have met your requirements for notice. Now, the COVID situation has actually, there is some changes to notice. In fact, Governor Lamont has issued executive orders to actually expand the notice provisions beyond what's in your regulations. We didn't choose to avail ourselves of that, although we certainly had every right to. You could simply put a sign up and not send letters to people. And that meets the governor's orders as an alternative to notice. You can also send emails to people if you have people's emails to give you a sense of sort of the way the governor's orders have, have expanded and made flexible the notice provisions. Honestly, letters are the most, the best way to get people's attention. Somebody might not drive by the site if you put up the signs, and certainly we don't have emails for everyone. So we thought the best way was to follow your regulations to a T, which we did. And so, you know, any, any suggestion whatsoever that the, the notice was legally insufficient is just patently false. And, and your staff has reviewed our notice and concurred with that as well. So, you know, if you want to provide additional notice, you can change your regulations to do so. But we certainly have met the, the letter of the law for this application.
Those are all my questions at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Just a clarification to the timing for subdivisions. Once you open the public hearing, you have 35 days to close the public hearing. So as of tonight, you have 35 days in order to close the public hearing. And you could also ask, the applicant can also ask for an extension that 35 days.
Okay. Alright, Hal, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess, well, back up a little, is that for the, to the question of notification? It's a moot point now, but certainly one of the things that it says on our notification is that the plans are available at the office. In times of COVID, that's ridiculous. I mean, we really should have updated that and made that, here, here's how you get a link to it, or let us know, and we'll send you via email or some other way to get people plans. Because we don't really want, I wouldn't want to be going to an office to show up to review plans at an office right now myself. That's kind of under the bridge at this point, but that's, I really think that however long this keeps going, or maybe, maybe that should just become the rule now that we're all electronic nicely, nicely, and just say here's, you just get to it the way our staff members got to it. Do have a question about, I understand that all of the properties immediately around this property are significantly larger than, than the minimum 12,000. Some are much larger. But then when I go out a little farther onto Grove Street and down on Cliff Street, they get, they seem to get a lot smaller. Do we have a feel for what the, what the range is of size of properties farther away from this property?
Is that a question to the applicant or the staff?
I'm sorry, that's actually for staff.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, no, you, you are correct. There are kind of a wide range of property sizes in this area. I did do just a brief, you know, density calculation of the, the close proximity to this lot. What I did was east of Cliff Lane, south of Star Street, east of Pearl Street, and north of Cliff. Kind of a block there from Mystic River to, to Cliff. And it was about 18 acres, the total size of it. There's 36 dwelling units in it. So the average density in the general vicinity of this property is about one dwelling per 21,000 square feet. Or one dwelling per about a half acre. So this proposal is a little more dense than the average in the, in the, from the density calculation I did. So this would be now more than 12,000 square feet, but it's, it's not, it's not.
Average is around 20,000 square feet?
In that general block, yes, but the underlying zoning is an R12, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so well, the reality is 13,000 on average is a whole lot smaller than 20,000. It's unfortunate because that's the way it's zoned, and that might be a failure there. But, so maybe more discussions required. But that's the way it's zoned, I'm afraid. And this might be the wrong zone if that's the case, and we want to maintain it in that area. But it certainly isn't far, and as soon as you go around the corner to have smaller lots and houses actually butting right, almost right up against each other, this would not be that. This would be kind of scattered. I do feel for the property owner just behind this property. Having the benefit of a half of a lot being vacant in front of their house, but it really wasn't her property, so I'm not sure what to do about that. Unless make her an offer of that one-third of the property. Regarding sidewalks, I was interested to hear someone mention, it was actually Peter Spring Steel mentioned how much traffic there actually is down the street there. I have walked that street, but not enough to notice how much there is, except it's probably the best, the best sledding street that raises downtown Mystic, by the way. But I am also interested from staff in saying, do we just disregarded putting sidewalks there? It seems like it would be a good connecting sidewalk. It's just one piece of it, but we routinely do one piece of the sidewalk so that the next time somebody does something more sidewalk happening, the availability of sidewalks. This is not a rural area. It is, it's a village area, and sidewalks are a good thing, especially on a very narrow street. It's it, do we have that on listed as a street we normally would put a sidewalk on? That's against the staff.
Uh, yeah, this is Bruce Lofgren again. This is not a street that we've listed for needing a sidewalk, but it's, it was when the commission's purview to require a sidewalk. The applicant has a legal argument against that, but I believe you could require a sidewalk in the front of that, along the lot frontage.
Personally, I'm a little torn on that one for obvious reason. There's any number of places in the neighborhood where there's no sidewalks. It'd be nice to chip away at it over time, but then again, that would be a change to downtown Mystic. I think that's all I have. There was a, was there any discussion about combining driveways? It is, that's a lot of driveways in one little stretch. That's kind of the downside of not using the adjacent existing access is that.
I can, I, I can speak to the issue of the adjacent access. I think one of the, the public speakers may have mentioned something, or I think maybe Bruce mentioned something. So a couple of things, that access on the east side of the property, the actual property line runs right down the middle of the driveway. It's not the stone wall. That's the actual boundary of the property. So half the driveway is part of this parcel, the 55-Star, and half the driveway goes with the properties on Grove Avenue. That driveway is the primary access for the homes behind this project. And there is a, on the land records, there is an agreement, an easement agreement that basically encumbers this property with that driveway. This property has the right to use that driveway as a secondary means of intermittent access. It cannot be, by deed restriction, be used as a primary entrance. So when we were first designing this project, we considered the possibility of running the driveway for lot two off of that driveway, but looking at the deed, it's pretty clear that that would not be permitted. You have to access whatever residences that are built here off of Star Street directly. That has to be your primary access point.
Was there any consideration? I know you narrowed all the driveways down to 12 feet. But was there any consideration given to having the driveway for lot two and driveway for lot one combined before they meet at the street, so you'd have just the one combined curb cut? The visual impact would be tremendously different, because instead of having four little roundabouts, you have two little curbs, so it's, it's a difference between two and one in a lot.
I, I can't speak to that. I don't know if Mr. Fettis might be able to speak to any design scenarios that were looked at.
I might combine your, you might complicate your driveway scenario, but, or exactly where the lot line is, but it certainly could be accomplished.
Greg, can you comment on that?
Well, I mean, I think we contemplated it, but it would push moving houses around and extending driveway lengths and so forth. It could be a possibility. You know, we, we looked at it. It's a, without having, you know, finished house designs and situated on the lot within the setbacks, it would be challenging to, to do combined driveways. Or, and I don't believe that our client was wanting to commit to combining a driveway at this point, but I think it, you know, upon approval, we would, we would look at specific house designs for the lots as well as whether or not it makes sense to combine a driveway.
You know, I think the issue with combined driveways, the shared driveway issue is the, is one that is always a concern for potential homeowners and home buyers. You know, if you get along with your neighbor, it's a great thing. If you don't, it can be less than ideal. So I think ideally, we'd like to have separate driveways. But sort of, you know, reiterating what Greg said, it's certainly possible that even after subdivision, you could decide to share a driveway. You would simply just need the proper easement documentation put in place.
Well, if it's after subdivision, then you're right, you could. Because I'm just looking, you wouldn't need to move any houses here. You just got to shift the entrance to the lot one driveway to its right and swing out. So it gets closer to the lot line and adjust that lot line and bring lot two's driveway to the left, so they are next to each other. Each one, you could still have a 20-foot wide, which is kind of too wide, but so they each have their own property. You don't even have to agree on anything. They can have separate plowing if they wanted to, but it would definitely drag down the
I'm sorry.
Having four driveways in a row.
Just, if I, if, I just want to make sure I understood you. You would say, you would suggest a wider driveway where both driveways basically butt up against each other along the common property line?
Yes, as opposed to having three separate, have one wide and one narrow.
So, so for instance, the driveway to lot one would, would basically merge with the driveway to lot two, so you'd have an extra wide curb cut there?
Yes.
Alright. I think, you know, I think one of the things we were trying to do was keep the dry, the curb cuts narrower, because I think the planning staff had asked us to do that to preserve rock wall and preserve character. So, you know, I, I think, you know, we, we've laid this out based on our, our communication with them on that point. I, I understand your, your concept, though, and your, and your suggestion.
And actually, someone had a problem with an existing tree if I'm reading this right, but you're already punching a 12, 12-foot wide hole in a rock wall, right? Yes.
Yes.
So, that just depends on which piece of wall we take out or how you do that. So I think it's doable. Not quite the way you have it here, but certainly waiting to see if it happens after the fact would not be the right way to go. It's a good comment that there's just too many curb cuts happening in a short, short little stretch there. And actually, not part of our purview, but for lot two, was that offered to the adjacent lot owner before this happened?
Not to my knowledge, but the property was on the market.
Well, that'd be the whole property now that it's subdivided.
Yeah. No, I, I don't believe, I don't believe any of the properties have been offered to adjacent property owners at this time. And I'm, and I'm not aware that any adjacent property owner has asked to acquire them either, but I could be wrong on that point.
Well, in lieu of fighting this in the courts, it could be just an offer makes, makes everybody happier and cheaper that way. I just wonder if that had come up and been refused.
Not that I'm aware of, question is that.
Alright, that's it for me.
Alright, Barbara?
Alright, Barbara?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. I realize that the notice was legally sent, I acknowledge that, although it wasn't received necessarily and in a a manner which made it easy for the neighbors to access all of the information and I I take their concerns much to heart. Especially in, in this time where going into a town office is at best by appointment and not very easy for any neighbors to do. And I, I totally sympathize with them. Yes, it may have been legally received by the post office, but whether or not they, the neighbors actually received it in a timely manner is it's difficult to say. I am very concerned about those curb cuts, having four curb cuts in a row like that. You know, this is still a rural street, it's still not, it's not Pearl Street, it's not gravel street, it's seeing four in a row is just too much. I would agree that perhaps the middle driveway as proposed could be built so that you go in a certain amount of ways and then a driveway to the left and a driveway to the right and a driveway straight ahead by being a little more feasible. I'm not an engineer, God knows, but that would seem to me a better design as far as curb cuts go. Being much of a walker and walking a lot around Mystic, you've known, I've spoken before about the need for sidewalks. They may not be used today, but they might be used a year from now, it might be used five years from now when the adjacent property owners do sell their property and, and perhaps subdivide their half acre lots or whatever acre lots. There may be more sidewalks to come, and I would like to see that. I think based on the questions that we have so far, I think that we should continue this hearing to give the neighbors a chance to access the information that they need and acquire counsel if they choose to do so. We are not under a deadline here tonight, and I would like to see this hearing continued.
Anything else, Barbara?
No.
Alright, Susan? So, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot, I was muted. Thanks, Jeff. I shared the other commissioners' comments and the basic problem is the residents didn't get the information they require in a timely manner for whatever reason. So I agree definitely with Barbara and others, we should really continue the hearing until February, so people have adequate time to really read the application and make the response they feel that they should.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Kevin?
Sure, I have a few, a few, I'm a non-voting member tonight, as you know, Jeff, Mr. Chairman, but I did have a couple of questions. So I just wanted to go back to Mr. Sweeney's comment when he really started the presentation, which I thought you guys actually did a very good job on the presentation. But when you talked about the Gallagher's love of Mystic and the property, are the Gallagher's actually moving into this property, or they're just, they love that, the investment, I guess, in Mystic?
Is that a question for, for me, sir?
Are they going to occupy one of these homes?
It's very possible that they might. I actually spoke with Graham today. Certainly, I think the, the initial thought was to actually to develop three homes and to sell them. There's consideration of the family with potentially keeping one of them for themselves. But that, I can't commit to that, and neither will they, but it's something that we talked about.
Yeah, I was just, I didn't know the intent of why you had stated that. So, Mr. Sweeney, you hear the, the comments by the neighbors as far as the urbanization of this particular project, you're tripling the density, but doing it, you know, to me, it looks like, you know, legally, but you're tripling that. Is there any thought that you or the Gallagher's would withdraw this application based on the comments you heard tonight of your neighbors? I mean, you talked about, you know, the love of, of neighbors being very, very important. Would you withdraw it, or possibly as one of the neighbors had indicated, at least bring it down to two lots?
That's not something we're, we're willing to discuss at this time.
Is there a reason for that?
This is an R twelve, RS twelve zone, sir. You've, your commission
I know the zone, I know the zone.
So we have a legal right to develop the lot as a property owner, and the, and this subdivision plan completely complies with your regulations. So no, that's not something that we would entertain at this moment.
Okay, that's, that's fair. So I'd like to go to the sidewalk next and really go back to staff. So the requirement of the sidewalk as another walker in Mystic is very important to me. I understand your comments on that. If we put the sidewalk back in, was there a problem with the size of these lots? Meaning, did it's cut into the size of the lot, that the lot wouldn't fit the requirement if you put the sidewalk in? Why was that really taken out? I'm just, I'm replying, asking staff at this time.
Yeah, this is, this is Bruce Lofgren again. So the question is, is, would the sidewalk reduce the, the property? Size, is that, is that your question, or I, I believe it would it would probably be on the street side of that stone wall, the sidewalk, but we'd have to have on the Harvard Public Works review that too. I don't think it would be on the applicant's property.
Okay, that's fair. So the next question was on a notification and I heard it, and I thought the, the attorney this evening made a good explanation on that. But has the Town of Groton attorney reviewed this to also, does it meet the criteria in his or her mind?
We did not have our town attorney review this, but you know, typical procedure is that when notifications go out, our office does receive proof of those notifications that they were sent out and delivered to the post office within the required timeline, which is at least ten days and no, not more than thirty days. I, I received the, the list, I made sure every property within a hundred and fifty feet radius was notified. It was delivered to the post office, I believe, on January fourteenth. That's usually the extent that, that we take that. We don't usually involve the town attorney with, with notifications unless unless it's questioned.
Right, but we have a, a great deal of, of pushback from the public this evening regarding that issue, and I thought, you know, attorney Sweeney did a great job explaining it. But we haven't had our attorney review it, correct?
Well, it's in our regulation.
I get that, Jeff. That's a different question. I didn't ask that question.
But Bruce is saying the regulation just says when it's given to the post office.
I get it.
So that's
My question was simple, it wasn't, that wasn't a question.
It's black and white. It doesn't need an attorney's interpretation.
You don't think, well, Jeff, we have other attorneys on here right now who are, are questioning it. That's, that's only, I didn't say, I didn't, I'm not going against the requirement, I simply asked the question, right? That's it. Okay, so then for Greg, I just wanted to see, because it's a beautiful street and, and you know, you've done a great job as far as his engineering is concerned on the front. Which trees, I can't tell which trees are, are existing versus being removed. If you could just, yeah, just do that yellow as you come across, I think that'd be very important.
Okay, Greg Fettis, Fettis Engineering. Starting in the, I guess it would be the western, northwestern corner. Existing fifteen inch tree to remain. An existing twenty-two inch tree to remain. Existing twenty inch tree to remain. An existing eighteen inch tree to remain. And a proposed tree here, because we were short of that fifty foot spacing. Sure, I'm gonna have to switch to a different sheet. I think we might have removed one or two, but I have to switch to, to the demolition plan. Which will show the ones to be removed. So there's an eighteen inch tree to be removed, and it looks like that's the only one that we would be removing along the frontage.
Okay, which is, which is terrific. So that's it, Jeff. Chairman, I turn it back to you.
Alright, I just have a couple of, couple of items. One of the, well, why don't we go back to the driveway issue? Right now, there are two existing curb cuts for this developed part of the property. By looking at the drawing, so we'd only be adding one more curb cut that's not there today. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you go
You're adding two.
There you go.
No.
No, you're right, you've got the two, you're right.
So I was just adding one. Okay, one of those drawings showed, I think that one shows an existing well. Is there a note on the drawing that says what happens to that well?
Yeah, to be removed. Right above the existing well, it should be actually below it, but it's above it for some reason.
Why, when I get these plans, they're so small, I can't really very easily, so it's hard to go through the notes. So it'll be removed and capped?
Yes.
Whatever happens to
Whatever the state, whatever the state requirements are for abandonment of a well.
The utilities serving the back lot, do they stay within the property line for that lot? You know, the water sewage, like
I'm gonna say yes before I pull the drawing up, but so we got the sewer on one side of the driveway and the water on the other side of the driveway and the underground electric within the right of way also.
Okay, so all the, all the cables are underground and
Everything's underground.
Underground, good. Alright, the tree that's added right adjacent to the stone wall and that one, is that far enough away so the roots aren't gonna damage the stone wall or the driveway? Because the roots of a tree take up a lot of space.
I would say yes, we'll pick a tree that has a deep root, you know, not a shallow rooted one, so we should be fine there.
Okay, now that, the existing driveway, which is more like a private road, I guess. What, why shouldn't lot two be using that stone wall as a boundary for determining the sidewalk? Side setback and also the square footage of the lot, because it's not usable area for the owner of lot, I guess it's lot three?
I can answer, I can answer that question, Mr. Chairman. It, it is usable area, it is area that is owned by what would be lot three and lot two, but it is
I understand that, but he can't use it because he can't use it for access, he can't do anything with it. And you have a big stone wall, which is normally the boundaries of the neighborhood.
But it isn't, it, it, it's normally the boundary, but it isn't in this case.
Legal.
What's that?
It's not legally, but visually it is.
Visually, you're right, when you go out there, it looks like the edge of the property is the stone wall. But from a legal point of view, the actual title to that area lies with our client. And so therefore, it can be used for the area of the lot. But you're correct, on, on visual inspection, you know, I think a layman looking at from Star Street would say, geez, that must be the property line, the stone wall. But for whatever reason, the way this was laid out years and years ago, the property line runs down through the middle of the driveway. And, and our property has the right to use that, but again, it can't be for primary access. You can see in our plan, though, we're not showing any use of it, so there's no disruption of it, of the stone wall.
Well, it's just we're creating and jamming in three small lots into lots sizes similar to everything else on the street. Legally meets things, but not the intent. Do I have anything else? I guess I don't have any other questions, but
Mr. Chairman, may I ask one more question? This is Michael.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is for staff. Peter Springsteen had asked about the frontage, and as an architect, I take his opinion carefully, and I just wonder if staff has any comments about, about Mr. Springsteen's question about the frontage?
Sure, sure, this is Bruce Lofgren again. From what I remember, Mr. Springsteen had comments regarding the twenty-five foot furniture requirement. So lots one and three there, you know, have, I can't see what the frontage is, but it's, it's much more than twenty-five. Lot three there has a twenty-five foot frontage, so it does meet that requirement. I, I think he had, I think he had a point, maybe that, you know, this that type of rear lot like that isn't really consistent with the neighborhood. You know, just, just looking at the whole neighborhood, I mean, there's, there's two properties just to the south of this property that are, that have, you know, almost no frontage at all on Star Street, the only frontage is to that, that easement right there. So you know, it's not completely inconsistent with the neighborhood and that's the requirement. So it's, it's twenty-five feet for frontage, and then the other requirement is lot width, which is sixty feet, so. So the lot width is measured at the, the front yard setback. Which on lot three is, I, I don't know what it's, it's wide, it's two iron feet there at the front yard setback of, of lot three. That's kind of the answer I have for that. I mean, it, it meets it. You know, I, I understand it's a rear lot, you know, twenty-five feet, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot of frontage. But it's, it's not that long. It's, I think it's, it's less than two hundred feet, you know, once you start getting longer than that, I believe our, our regulations say that more than four hundred feet, maybe, then you have to start having different requirements, but it's not that long an accessway and, and that portion of the property isn't counted towards the requirement there. The lot area of lot two is actually sixteen thousand five hundred feet. But it's, the net area is only any fourteen, so you're not counting that accessway towards the lot area.
Mr. Chairman, would the applicant have an opportunity to rebut in response to some of the comments of the public?
Yes, he can.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I, I know Stephen Carney had brought up the issue of notice, I think I covered that previously. He also brought up the issue of the stone wall along the easement. That is not, the stone wall is not the boundary of the historic district. It's by the lot line, so it's right in the middle of the driveway is the boundary of the historic district, so that wall is not part of the historic district, and we are not touching that wall in our proposed plan. I know there's been some discussion, Mr. Carney also brought up the issue of the sidewalk. Certainly, the commission has every right to require a sidewalk. We have every right to request a waiver. I think a sidewalk here doesn't make a lot of sense, because it really is a sidewalk to nowhere. There are no sidewalks anywhere along Star Street. And I would, I would also suggest that the suggestion that there are extensive sidewalks in the neighborhood is not true either. There's just, it's simply not the case. There are tiny little sections here and there, but nothing, I think, that would support building a sidewalk along Star Street. It really would be the proverbial sidewalk to nowhere, and I would urge the commission to grant that waiver. As I said before, there are no wetlands on the property. Mr. Fettis commented that in, in terms of Peter Trupe's comments. There were comments from Mr. Roper about the character of the neighborhood. Quite respectfully, character of the neighborhood is not a consideration in the evaluation of a subdivision, and, and I'll talk a little bit about that more in a second, but Kathy Gates suggested that their, the notification didn't allow her to see the plans. I think Mr. Zod properly pointed out that the last line of the letter actually gave her the number for the office. And, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Zod that certainly this is not a time for people to be coming into the office, but you know, Mr. Lofgren clearly indicated he can send plans to people and make them available, and that's why that number is there. Mr. Spring Steel also spoke, um, um, Mr. Spring Steel is a good friend and a colleague of mine. I've worked with him a lot. Um, again, uh, as Mr. Lofgren indicated, the 25 feet, uh, accessway for the, uh, for lot number two. Is completely compliant with the regulations and it's, it's no different than the, uh, uh, the rear lot access just to the east for the lots behind this property. As well. Uh, Ms. Labella spoke about privacy. Um, again. The effect of privacy is not something that you can consider in your subdivision regulations. Um, it doesn't mean I'm not empathetic to the concern. It's just, it's not something that is evaluated in the subdivision application and. Ms. Gannon's comments and that of Mr. Mr. John Carney regarding the character of the community, again, that really isn't subdivision. Um, uh, relevant to the subdivision process. Um, you know, I want to remind you that it is a public hearing tonight, but this is not. A, a special permit. Uh, this is not a zone change. Uh, it is a subdivision with a coastal site plan review. And our state statutes and your subdivision regulations are very clear that the commission has limited discretion. In reviewing and approving these types of applications. Um, fundamentally, as a matter of law, if the subdivision plan that we put before you meets or exceeds the bulk and dimensional requirements. Outlined in your zoning regulations, which this plan does, and it meets all your other subdivision requirements, which I would submit it does. Um, my client's entitled to an approval. And likewise, the approval of the coastal site plan review should also be granted in this case. Um, this is a pre-existing developed site. Mr. Lofgren testified that it's almost 500 feet away from the waterfront. Um, we have E and S controls and we've provided rain gardens as part of a drainage plan to mitigate any potential coastal, um, impact to coastal resources. You know, that being said, I recognize that there are neighbors that are concerned and upset. Uh, I know they, they submitted letters. You heard from them tonight and, and, and we are empathetic to those concerns. Um, we certainly understand that change, particularly in an established neighborhood, can be frustrating and it can be worrisome. Um, but issues, as I've said, related to the character of the neighborhood, property values, privacy. These concerns are not legally relevant to a subdivision review. You, this commission has set the requirements for subdivision. You've set the zoning here and, and perhaps you may want to change your mind. As to what the zoning is in the future in this area, but right now this part of Star Street is zoned RS 12. And we have submitted a subdivision plan that meets to the letter of your regulations. Um, we complied with your standards and it deserves an approval. Um, so, um, you certainly have the right to continue this meeting. If you choose to, you have that right under the statutes and the regulations of the, for 35 days. Uh, if you feel that's necessary, we believe that the application before you is complete and is ready for approval. Um, thank you again. Appreciate we're available if you have any other questions, uh, tonight. Thanks.
Does anyone on the commission have any, any questions or open issues to? Be addressed? In the future? Does anyone have any concerns for closing the public hearing tonight? On the commission?
Do we really want to do that since? We had some people who, given the COVID situation. Might want to come up with more discussion, though I don't think we need to hear much more.
And, and if I can jump in, there are some members of the public who would like to speak to you again.
Oh, all right. Why don't we recognize them?
Sure, uh, I'll go ahead and do that. Um, so first up, I see Peter Roper.
Thank you, Steph. I just cannot, um. Let this go by. Um, some of the discussion I've heard about sidewalks is encouraging from the commission and discouraging from the, from the applicant. Um, if, if the commission is going to allow us to happen, I think you have to include sidewalks because you're intensifying this area significantly. Um, I spent a lot of time with Barbara Nelson next door to this lot and. It's constant, the people walking the street with dogs, with baby carrots, walking kids. Um, and I, I agree, there are no sidewalks and if the street was staying the same, then probably you could get without having sidewalks, because, you know, it's not as much traffic and. Um, you know, if people are careful, which you hope they are. Uh, you could get by with it, but if you're gonna intensify the, the neighborhood, which this is definitely intensification. I don't care if it's allowed, accepted, approved in the regulations. This is an intensification, so I think a sidewalk would be necessary. On this piece and then in the future on other pieces, because if you look at this. This map. A, a majority of the lots on that map are, are big enough to be subdivided, so if you're gonna. Start this, this avalanche, I think you're gonna have to do sidewalks at some point, so this developer should pay his portion of it now. I'd rather not see this development go through. I, I heard someone mention splitting the lot, which. I feel would be reasonable for the nature of this community and. I, I heard the. Lawyer say that, uh, character is not important and it may not be in the regulations and it may not be required and it may not be legally. Applicable, but character is all what Mystic is about. These people bought this lot because they love the character of Mystic and now they're taking a piece of it and tearing it apart. I think that's pretty disgusting in, in my, my opinion. So I, I would urge your commission to continue this public hearing so that people can have more chance to study the record and, you know. I think almost everybody didn't get a chance to get the notice even to figure out what was going on until. Uh, the 19th, so that's a week, a week ago. And, uh, considering when places are open and when you can get at stuff and when you can, you know, get it all lined up, it's not much time. So legally, it's okay, but again. Seems like practically it's not, not very good. So if you continue the public hearing, it gives other people a chance to, to. Educate themselves and have more comment if they want to. But, uh, please, uh, consider a sidewalk if you're gonna allow this to happen. That would be a minimum. There is a sidewalk on, uh, around the corner from, uh, 73 Star, um. Cliff, I guess it is. Cliff Lane, Cliff Lane has a sidewalk and I think there are sidewalks down close into the river in a couple of spots, but, um. If, if you're doing what you're being asked to do here, I think you need to include a sidewalk because it's gonna be necessary if this is gonna be the trend. And you might even look at the regulations and maybe change the zoning because this is, this is kind of disturbing to see that this was. This might happen to a lot of lots in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have others that want to speak, uh, them.
I see Medeline Carney.
So this is Stephen Carney again from 18 Borough Street. And I just get a little discouraged. In the way this is working and, and, and I know the commission's really working hard with doing a Zoom hearing and trying to afford people their rights. But they can't see what I'd see, which is six people sitting around a table screaming at a muted, a muted computer. And unable to be heard, unable to see their consternation witnessed by the members of the board and really upset. And oftentimes when Mr. Sweeney is speaking, it seems like he's been appointed as being the legal expert and when he says something. It's just a matter of conclusion of law as to where he says. Boundary lines are, what people have rights to certain things. I mean, I'm sitting next to a Gannon and I bet she would agree that a Gannon hasn't set foot on that right of way. In 50 years, um, and, and so these things are not as matter of fact as Mr. Sweeney says. It seems that it's an agreement that there's been some sort of notice requirement met and that's just matter of fact. And we say, no, it hasn't. And I defy Mr. Sweeney to state one case, one superior court case. That says this short of a notice was adequate during a pandemic. Everybody's changing their rules. Everybody's modifying things and the criminal courts, people don't even have a speedy trial right anymore. Um, that, that is moving as quickly as this when they could be incarcerated for life. So him matter of factly saying that is just not accurate. These people need counsel and Mr. Sweeney is not the counsel. When he talks about a sidewalk to nowhere, you have no idea how offended the people are here and they start saying, well, I walk to church on sidewalks. I go to the post office. I go to the CBS. You can go to a world-class museum on the sidewalks that are what, an eighth of a mile from here? So for him to be so dismissive is just not right. And what I want the members of the board to know is that people that I'm sitting with are really, really angry. And it doesn't sound like he wants to be, hi- his family wants to be a member of this community. His notice is arguably legally sufficient. It is not morally sufficient. He mailed that notice out in a holiday weekend that required a signature. That what you get from the post office doesn't even say it comes from a law firm is patently unfair. And that's what I'd like to say for now, but we would respectfully request more time.
All right, thank you.
I'm John Carney.
Oh, we have more.
You're muted. I'm John Carney and I keep hearing mention of this character of the neighborhood. And yet, people that are coming in, putting three properties, squeezing them into one small area. Are gonna. Do their best to change the character and they would not, not preserve it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to address this?
Uh, let, anyone else, um, under Medeline Carney?
Uh, nope, that'll be it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Jeffrey Richards.
Mute, okay, there we go. Okay, am I online now?
You are.
Okay, uh, thank you for listening to me, all of you who are there. Uh, I'm Jeffrey Richards from 220 Cliff Street, not too far from Star. And I had two observations about the meeting tonight. The first one is that it seemed to me, uh. Some of the people at the meeting tonight need to go take a trip out to the site and actually look at something. Uh, take the maps with you and see what they're talking about, because it seemed, some of the comments. Reflected that. You on the commission aren't, aren't really all familiar so much with what's being discussed. On the flat papers. And that's, that's just, uh, something that would help you very much, I think. And the second thing is. This is all about character. That's what neighborhoods are like and. Things that come in should be in the character of the neighborhood and stuffing three houses where. Even two maybe more than should be there, I think is. Might be legal, but it certainly is not community friendly or, or what. I think people that in Mystic want to see from the commission, so I would recommend you. Send the applicant back for some better ideas. Uh, and I'm finished now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do not see any other hand raised from the public.
Does staff have any more input to?
Um, no, I, I don't have anything else to add right now.
All right, but I guess hearing some of the. The comments, maybe we should be, uh, continuing this meeting until. I mean, the public hearing until our next, next meeting, because we do have time for that, correct?
Yes, yeah, we have time for it and, uh.
Do we need a motion for that, Jeff, or can you just continue it?
I think we can just continue. We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
But I think all we have to do is just say we want to continue it.
February 9.
To the February 9th. And resolve some of the issues. But we should also understand. What we're allowed to, to approve or disapprove. That we, we really have to live to our regu- our regulations. Or we, we end up in court. And the judges just read, read what's written down. Which we don't want to do. All right, so I'll continue, uh, the public hearing to February 9th. Uh, moving on, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll see you on February 9th.
We'll move on to our next item, which is public communications. For the commission.
Do you want to do minutes first?
Well, I didn't think we had any minutes.
Oh, you're right. Okay, sorry.
I didn't see any there.
All right, so public communications, if there's anyone.
Then preparing for us, that's, that's good for tonight. Public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? Other than what we've already identified? Staff have any?
No, this is Sue. I, I thought maybe I should mention the communication I got.
Yes, yes, you should.
And, uh, let me know if I should say more or less or whatever.
Well, just the fact you received them.
Okay, I did receive a community. Yeah, sorry.
I mean, if it isn't affecting something that's on the agenda tonight, I think just notification is all.
Okay, terrific, thank you. I did receive a communication, uh, last Sunday, January 24th from, uh, Roseanne Kautowski. Um, this is about the Mystic Oral School, other proposals, so. Just to let you know, I passed it on as per is my, uh. Practice for all these years to town staff, um, copy to John Reiner, Deb. And Jeff Pritchard, so. Okay, is that enough?
Well, you've had several, you've had some communications from the director of.
Yes, okay, I'm happy to go to those just briefly.
Well, they, they're a follow-up from.
Yeah, just briefly, sorry, my voice, um, yeah, the follow-up was some correspondence on the, uh, legalities or not. Or more than not, the other competing bids. On the oral school had to be disclosed. And, um, the reason that came up was because apparently, uh, Roseanne Kautowski, who is a member of the RTM, as you know. Um, she was aware that there was a member, another member of the RTM who did an FOI to get the other three bids. On the oral school and that person did receive them. Um, they had some redactions and everything, but still. There was quite a large element that was then public information, so then I, I basically what I did is I asked John. That if we could, uh, receive, or if I could receive the part that was in fact public information and he has said he's going to put it. On the website, um, within the next, this was 24 hours. This is as of this afternoon. Um, but it will be on the economic development webpage in the next 24 hours, he said, so. That's my summary.
Okay. Does anyone else have any communications? Where the commission, the staff have any?
No, no, but there is a person that has raised their hand with the public.
Well, that's where I was going to go on to public. We'll go on to, uh, any communications from the public. Wishing to address this.
There is a person that it looks like they're on a phone call. Um, in order to speak on a phone call, you need to. Press star nine.
Thank you very much. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Yes, this is Roseanne Kautowski, 24 Ann Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut, um, RTM District 5 and. Before I shift to another subject than what you've been talking about all night, I just appreciate. The commission and the questions they've asked and the concern they have for the neighbors and I'm praying that that will. Also be the way the commission will handle the Mystic Oral School. Thank you, um. Okay, at the special meeting last week, Director Jones gave a review of. How did we get here regarding the Mystic Oral School? That was one perspective. Now for another perspective. February 13, 2016, yes, five years ago. Dear Mr. Bronk. Please reference the article below from Sunday's day regarding developing the former Mystic Oral School property. I am contacting you to request resident involvement in all aspects of the process to develop the former Mystic Oral School property. It does not appear from the article that anything will happen overnight. Therefore, please consider allowing residents to participate along with town and state officials in the entire process. Perhaps a task force could be established in order to include all interested residents. I have copied my RTM representatives as well as Mayor Flex for their information and hopeful support. Thank you for your consideration. And it went on like this for years. Trying to get information and discovering no transparency and secrecy regarding. regarding the development of Mystic Oral School from town staff. This, of course, and is cause for concern. The concern has always been the developer, the developer and project would be approved without any neighbor input. The project would be presented as like it or love it, done deal, and that is exactly what has happened. When I was elected to the RTM in 2017, I thought now the town will have to let me and the neighbors know the truth about what's going on with the Mystic Oral School. Nope, still shut out. Now the concern has grown from lack of transparency and secrecy on the part of the town to outrage over the enormity, density, and inappropriateness of this project. This project does not belong in the northeast section of town, and everyone knows it. At the last meeting, I tried to make the point that when the developer finally answers the questions that everyone is asking, will it be too late to stop the project? I didn't get any answers. Is the developer delaying answering the questions because he knows if he waits, it will be too late to stop the project? I have two other quick points. At the last meeting, Representative Whitney, very diplomatically and delicately, raised the concern of the appearance of an inappropriate relationship between the developer and town staff. I would like to echo that concern. I hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission will take this concern very seriously. Even the appearance of an inappropriate relationship leads to zero lack of trust by the residents. The last point I would like to make tonight is regarding the rejected proposals. At the last meeting, I was shocked to find out that the Planning and Zoning Commission did not receive the other proposals submitted for the Mystic Oral School property. How could that be? Hopefully, the commission will ask why. And then, of course, Deb Jones informed me today that the proposals were going up on the website. Thank you very much. Once again, there is a lot at stake here for the residents and neighbors in the northeast section of town regarding this proposal. We depend on our elected and appointed officials to consider projects that are appropriate and good for our community. This project is not good and not appropriate for the community. I urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to scale back or eliminate this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roseanne. Anyone else in the public wish to address us tonight?
There is somebody else that wants to speak. Becca Welch.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for giving us a chance to speak again tonight. This has been a fascinating evening, I just have to say. I'm sorry, I'm Rebecca Welch at 32 Boulder Court. Yes, I've listened tonight to the discussion of the Star Street subdivision, and I smiled when Mr. Zod mentioned sledding. When I was a kid, on snow days, they would close off Star Street and we would all go sledding there. And that was a really nice memory to bring back. So thank you for mentioning that. I hope, oh, I lost my screen. Well, I hope that when you think about the plan for the oral school, that you will think about what they've said here tonight. The Star Street subdivision seems to meet the zoning requirements, but there's a consensus among the neighbors that it does not fit the character of the neighborhood. The proposed project for the oral school grossly exceeds the current zoning requirements, and it certainly doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. And I ask that you will think about that when you are considering amending the zoning requirements to allow hundreds of apartments in a quiet neighborhood. And that's all. Thank you very much for the chance to speak.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
That is, there was, that's Roseanne's phone number, Deb. Jeffrey Richards.
He spoke.
Okay, I spoke already, but I just want to agree with the comments that I just heard. And also that I think it's extremely important for the Mystic Oral School project, since it would be the largest project ever attempted in the town, that there should be a referendum about it. You may pass that along to others that who would be interested. Thank you very much. I'm finished.
Thank you. There's a raised. Roseanne, is that you again? There is a phone.
Yes, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And that is it.
Your cats have anything to say tonight?
They haven't made a peep.
All right, moving on, then go down to next item is site plans. We have SIT 2012, the boat repair building, which is a continuation from our last meeting. We had a couple of questions that required answering.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Bruce. I'm going to promote the applicants here. And I promoted Seamus. If there's anyone I'm missing, just let me know, I'll promote them too.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Thank you again, commission. Nice to see you again. Thanks for having us. I'm Seamus Moran. I work for LaRoe Engineering Associates. I'm AP in Connecticut. I'm representing the applicant, Bruce, I'm sorry, not Bruce Lawf, Nick Sahin for his application at 215 Flanders Road here in Groton. We obviously were here two weeks ago. We gave a full presentation for the project, and I think we addressed most of it. There are two comments that were outstanding, which is the reason for the continuation. So I figured we could just address those two comments so we don't have to keep you here all night. So I guess the two comments, the first one was a holding tank, and the second one, the first one is the monitoring of the holding tank to make sure that wasn't going to overtop. The second one was air quality monitoring and permitting. So I will address the holding tank briefly. And then after me, we have Thor Holt from Holt and Coleman LLC is with us tonight as well. He will address the air quality monitoring. Clint Brown from LaRoe Engineering Associates is also here. He's an associate of mine. If he has any comments or wants to make any statements, he's also joining us. And I think Nick Sahin is on the phone. I know Nick had some troubles last meeting. I don't see his name directly in front of me, but it might be available somewhere on the side. So if Nick is here, maybe he can raise his hand. He can speak later. But for now, I'll just talk about the holding tank. The concerns last meeting. Oh, Nick is here. I hear him. Hi, Nick. So with regard to the holding tank, I mentioned we would monitor as it filled up for the first month or quarterly or annually. And the commission wanted something a little bit more substance. So what we're going to do is we're going to put a level sensor, I'm sorry, float sensor in there, that'll be attached to an audio visual alarm panel within the building. The float switch will be set at the 1,500 gallon capacity in the 2,000 gallon holding tank. So even when the level sensor kicks on, kicks the audio visual alarm on, there will still be an extra 500 gallons within the holding tank. So there will be plenty of room for the tank to continue to fill up in the event that, you know, he has to rinse the boat down or something like that in the repair shop before a pump can get there, before a pump truck can get there. So the tank will be, you won't have to go out there and check it. It will be kind of self-monitored, and there will be an audio visual alarm that'll tell them when there's, you know, 500 gallons left in the tank. So I think that pretty much handles the holding tank monitoring. The other one was, the other question that everybody had was the air quality monitoring and permitting. So if I can pass it over to Thor Holt, he can tell you about some of those air quality monitoring requirements.
Good evening, Thor Holt of Holt and Coleman, here on behalf of Nick Sahin and Fort Hills Sitco LLC, the owner of the property. I had been forwarded some of the questions from the last meeting and did a review of federal and state clean air monitoring and had sent a draft of a letter today, which I sent to Seamus for forwarding to the commission. Unfortunately, that didn't get in in time, but I think that'll be available for your later review. But the substance of the letter is that really the planned activity is marine vessel repair. So we're looking at what type of activity would be conducted onsite. And all of the regulations that we're concerned with concern the volume of material that is to be released or to be used. I included in the letter a list of the volume that Mr. Sahin anticipates. And of that, we have basically eight different categories. There's marine bottom paints, which would be roll-on applications only. About seven to 10 gallons per year is what we anticipate for total volume. Polyester resins for repair would be 15 to 20 gallons total. Epoxy resins, one to five gallons total. Epoxy primers of eight to 12 gallons total. Acetone, which is an agent used for cleaning up the tools used in this fiberglass boat repair business, would be about five to eight gallons per year. Top coat paints, we're anticipating 10 to 15 gallons per year, as well as top coat reducers and thinners, which would be an additional four to six gallons. So on the low end, we're looking at probably closer to 50 gallons per year total. An average use based upon Mr. Sahin's last three years of business, which include his present location at Knott's Shipyard and his previous location at Fort Rachel, is about 63 gallons per year average, and the maximum anticipated is 76 gallons. What the EPA uses for annual discharge requirements is a threshold that is based upon a spray gun operating all day, every day for one year, for a total of 8,760 hours per year of operation. We are not going to approach anything near that type of usage. And based upon that length of operation, there are several different categories. One is a new source review permitting, and that's under the Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-174. And it's enabling legislation or regulations. The Deep Commissioner has the authority to review and issue permits for any major stationary source, and that's defined as 50 tons or more per year of volatile organic compounds. Based upon about 63 to 76 gallons of product a year, we are nowhere near 50 tons of volatile organic compounds or nitrogen oxides. And that, that limit is set, or that threshold is set with what's defined under the regs as a serious ozone non-attainment area. The entire state of Connecticut, with few exceptions, is a serious ozone non-attainment area. There are industrials such as Bridgeport, middle under the state, Fairfield County, where historically there have been large-scale manufacturing. Those have a different threshold, but we're not concerned with that here because of the definition that's an issue. And that's definition is a 22A-174-1, paragraph 103 of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies. And what we anticipate, we would also be within the 15 tons per year, which is the exemption provided by Section 22A 174, 3A, sub-paragraph A2A1. And what that provides is that when we are under this threshold of 15 tons per year, we don't even have to have a permit because the permit is provided by the regulation itself. If you're a small volume producer such as Mr. Sahin's operation, the legislation itself provides the authority for the equipment to be operated. There's a form that is completed and filed with DEEP to tell them that the operation would be proceeding. But because of the volume of material to be used, there's no permitting that's necessary. The next section would be 22A-174-3B, A15 of the regulations. And we look to that because it defines a surface coating operation, which is what we're concerned with here with the painting of marine vessels. And again, that allows us to qualify under the permit by rule regulation that I just spoke of because of the volume. And again, we're producing less than 15 tons per year of any individual pollutants. If we look on a federal level, we look to the National Emission Standards for shipbuilding and ship repair because again, we're dealing with surface coatings. And the source of that authority is 40 Code of Federal Regulations, Section 63.781, and its following regulations, which defines major sources. And those major sources are more than 10 tons per year of any single hazardous air pollutant or 25 tons per year of any combination of hazardous air pollutants. And those pollutants are defined by 40 CFR, Section 63.782. Because again, we're going to be under that threshold. And the alternative to the tonnage per year is the anticipated annual volume of coatings will be less than 100 liters, which is 52.8 gallons. The coatings that we're talking about here, the only spray coatings are going to be those top coat paints of 10 to 15 gallons, together with reducers of about another four to six gallons. So we are less than half the threshold for any hazardous air pollutants that have to be discharged by a spray gun. Next, if we look to the regulations for what defines a conditionally exempt small quantity generator, which is 40 CFR, Section 261.5A, as well as adopted through the state of Connecticut Regulations, is 22A-449C, Paragraph 101B. Because we're going to be producing less than 100 kilograms per month of hazardous waste, we are within the permit by rule regulation. And all that's necessary is that we keep a record of all hazardous waste disposal for a period of five years. With respect to any dust or vapors, that's going to be controlled. In particular, the dust that could be generated would be controlled by HEPA filtration vacuums used on every single sander. Those filters remove any particles down to 10 microns in size. Collect those particles in bags where they can be safely disposed of. And the average noise emission of the sanding equipment used is 66 decibels, which is the level of normal conversation of a business office. So it's unlikely to produce any noise pollution that will disturb the neighbors. I would also point out that at this very same site, there was previously a landscaping operation that was run for years. And north of that is a trucking operation at 281 Flanders Road, as well as a masonry contractor there. So this operation will be quiet and will not be any that will disturb the neighbors through noise. I was told that there was some concern about this being in or near residential area. This is a IM classified zone, which allows for light production. Within the last 35 years, Mr. Sahin has operated his business at three different locations. Presently, it's at Knott's Shipyard, which is in the center of a residential neighborhood, right down at the tail end of Knott's, where it meets the end of the Mystic River, next to Abbott's Lobsters. Previous to that location, he ran his business at Fort Rachel Marina, which is at the end of Water Street, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, where Daniel Packer in is located. That's a residential neighborhood. No complaints there of any kind for the 27 years that he ran his business there from 1991 through 2018. And previous to that, he ran his business for five years at LBI Incorporated, which is on Route 117 in Groton, again surrounded by residential area. No complaints. In over 35 years of operation, Mr. Sahin has never had a noise vapor or pollution complaint of any kind. He runs a clean operation. It's not going to be one that will disturb the neighbors. And certainly, we believe we'll comply with all the regulations that do apply, and there are no permitting requirements for this operation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thor. Just one more thing that I wanted to bring up, point of clarification. Bruce and I had a conversation earlier, and I either misspoke or miscommunicated at the last meeting, or there was a misunderstanding. But there's two buildings that we're proposing. One's about a 10,000 square foot boat storage facility. The other is the repair shop. There will be absolutely no rinsing of boats or cleaning of boats in the storage building. The, in the repair building, however, there may be incidental rinsing of boats. The in the repair building, however, there may be incidental rinsing of boats. It's not a cleaning facility, is not a power washing boats. It's a repair shop. But if a boat comes in off the street and you know, before he starts prepping, he might have to rinse the boat off. So I I don't know if I misspoke or something last week, or it was just misunderstanding. But there may be some incidental rinsing within the confines of the repair shop that will all be collected in the in the floor drains. And will go to the holding tanks. But that's what if it wasn't said last week, I just wanted to reiterate that point this week. I don't think it's an issue, but I just wanted to clarify. I'm not sure if Clint or Nick have anything they'd like to say, or if the commission has any questions at this point.
Well, does staff have any additional information to provide?
Um, no, I can just address what team has just mentioned about the the power washing. So I provided a revised draft motion to everyone today. One of the suggested conditions I added was that there be no power washing, rinsing or washing within that boat storage building. I just put that on because I thought that was on, you know, from a conversation at the last meeting about, you know, concerns whether the. Washing would fill the holding tank too quickly, but. But I I guess that that is that isn't what the intention of the property is. And they are going to put a sensor on the on the tank. So if if that's sufficient for the commission, then I would suggest a condition or are we modifying it to allow rinsing and washing?
Does the applicant, has he seen the the motion proposed motion?
He did. I also talked to to Nick Sahin today as well about about the motion and the condition.
They have no concerns with this one?
He had he had the same concerns that that Seamus just had regarding.
No, I mean concerns with the motion.
Yes, he well, he did. He had concerns regarding that that condition I just mentioned about the rinsing and the washing in this. Or not the storage buildings, excuse me, or repair building.
I mean, they objected to the wording or?
He was he was objecting that he was objecting to the wording of it because his business does require rinsing and washing with a boat.
Oh, so we should not have item 16, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Gotcha. All right. So I'll open it up to commissioners if they have any questions. Mike, do you have any concerns with? Approving the motion? You there, Mike?
Here I am.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So I'm glad that we waited and we got the answers that we got. I'm more comfortable. I the air quality and the dust I'm I'm comfortable with. I guess that the tank is more to do with our regulations than I am with what's going on. So I just want to be clear is that the building. Where Thor, Mr. Holt was speaking about 50 50 gallons to 75 gallons per year going into this tank of. Materials, but there'll be more than that, won't there?
Well, the the 50 to 75 gallons is of of product. That's not going into the tank, that's going hopefully onto the boats.
Yeah, but there's going to be water in it as well, correct?
Incidental water to base the originally was intended that if the floor were to be cleaned up and mopped. That this floor drain would catch any product that was on the floor. And then take that to a a tank where it could be collected and then safely disposed of.
Yeah, I guess I mean, this is my concern. And maybe my question was misleading. But that if we're looking at 50 gallons a year, we're 30 years before we're gonna. Reach before that alarm goes off.
Well, the it's the the paint product is not going straight into that collecting bin. The paint product is going onto the boat. That's the 50 gallons. And so the the tank is there to catch anything from the floor drain. That would run off either from the rinsing of a boat. For example, if you're wet sanding a boat to perfect the finish and make it smooth and using a high a high grit sandpaper. That that sand that that. Sanding dust may run onto the floor and into the drain and then safely caught, gathered and then trucked off site.
Okay.
And the washing of boats, we're not talking about pulling the boat straight out of the water and having. Mussels and barnacles and other things all over the parking lot. That's usually handled at the marina when they haul the boat. They have a special catch basin system at the lift dock that addresses. The marine. Stuff that's coming off the bottom of a boat.
What what is the life of a tank like this? Useful life?
It's a concrete waterproof tank. As long as it's not corroding or anything like that in in the tank. I mean, you'd want to say. 60 years, I mean, like it's like a septic tank. The septic tanks will last longer than leaching fields usually. It's the leaching fields get backed up, but I don't know the lifespan. It's certainly it's a number of years.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Al, do you have any questions? Concerns?
Yeah, actually, I think I'm gonna just ask one thing just for clarification. So. Almost everything you do is is going to be rolled on. There's very little spray except for the top coat, is that what I was hearing? I was hearing some acetone use, but that's just painted on, but.
But the acetone use is to clean the tools.
Yeah, that's not much because then by the time that makes it across the street, it would disperse so much. It it's invisible, but the. The only thing that might have, I'm looking for my thing was not so much health aspects, but but odor. And what I'm hearing is that's few and far between. I'm going with the Kentucky Fried Chicken concept. It's not going to hurt you. It'll make you hungry, but you don't want it in your kitchen all the time. So in this case, we're saying that it's just this the spraying is the only thing that's going to put anything out in the air. It's not going to be sandblasting, it's not going to do it, it's going to be spraying liquid material. And you're not really not using very much of that, is that what I understand?
Correct, and the and the spraying. Of any paint product by its nature will be inside because the product itself is sensitive to dust and humidity. To get the high quality finish that Nick is producing. You want to paint in a controlled environment, in the shade, inside with doors closed to keep the to keep the. Any dust, even even pollen in the springtime can ruin the finish if it gets into it. So what he's trying to do is control the environment where the paint is applied. And by that, it will contain the product such that it's any chance of escape is minimal.
All right.
And the total product used is going to be well under any reporting thresholds that the state or the federal deep is concerned with.
It wouldn't be a reporting threshold. I mean, frankly, if I'm if I'm if my neighbor next door knows when I'm painting. So it's it's not a reporting threshold we're looking at. But I think we're at a distance where you're like the lotion is going to be such that we'll be fine. So I'm okay.
Hey, Barbara, do you have any concerns?
I'm I'm good. I'm fine.
So?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay, Kevin, do you have anything?
I do. So I just wanted to look at number six again and just ask the question for for Bruce. So if they have a tank in the repair building, why are we concerned that they don't do any repair or washing in that building? I don't get quite get that. Why are we concerned that in number six, that they don't provide any washing or rinsing or anything in that building?
Why would we be concerned that they they didn't do that in there? I.
No, doesn't number six read that we're not allowed, they're not allowed to do any washing or rinsing in that building? In the repair?
Yes. Yes, it does. And the reason I put that in there because I thought that was from conversation at the last meeting that there wouldn't be any rinsing. There wouldn't be any washing in there. And I thought that was to address the commission's concern about that tank overflowing. And and that was based off that tank not having a monitor on it or a sensor. So you would never know when the when the tank was actually filled up. But I thought the argument that would that the applicant was making was that. It would it would take years and years to years to fill up because there would be no washing and rinsing in there. And that if every chemical in the building were to spill, you know, it would only be about 30 to 50 gallons in that tank. And it would take years to fill up.
Right.
That's why I put that in there just to kind of alleviate some of the concerns from the commission. But now that the sensor is proposed, I mean, I'm comfortable with suggesting.
Yeah, so that's what I'm suggesting. If the sensor is in there, I don't think six number six is necessary. I don't know whether the applicant, you know, argued that point or not. But if the sensor is there, you know, I don't think we need to, we don't need that language in the in the motion. That's my point. My only second point, Mr. Chairman, is I just wanted to say to Seamus, I think you did a great job. We asked some questions that made your application much more precise. And by bringing in Thor and providing us those answers. I thought you made a very good business decision and very precise application. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. I wish I could take the credit for hiring Thor, but that that goes to Nick.
He'll be it.
But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, so so. So this tank is not a metal tank. It's you said it's a concrete.
Concrete, yep.
Concrete tank, so we don't have to worry about replacing it every 20 years like.
Correct, that's the goal. Correct, yes, we don't want to replace it hopefully in for the next 50, 75 years, somewhere in that range.
Do we ever have to keep it on a record of it somewhere or that how do people know? 60 years from now that there's a tank in the ground that has to be dug up or sealed or?
I I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I'm sure we have to submit something to the town. There will be a record, he has pump out, he have to maintain pump out records. There will be a record of that being replaced if and when it ever does get replaced and.
Well, I guess we have pump out records may be the real answer.
Part of the record, part of the record keeping for the hazardous materials would include that. Even though we're we're under the threshold. We do have to keep a log for five years of what hazardous materials are generated onsite and what leaves and who it goes with.
Oh, okay, so that's that's how that's controlled really. Okay, I was just curious how that happened. How it's controlled. Well, no one else has any questions and do they? If not, I'll make a motion for the. Application. I'll make a motion to approve a site plan, SIT 20-12 Boat Repair Building, located at 215. Flanders Road with the following modifications. One. All boat repair work shall be completed inside. Of the building designated for boat repair on the approved plans. No outdoor repair work is permitted. Two, any outdoor storage or display of boats shall be limited to the areas clearly defined on the approved plans. Three, a geochemical investigation of the site soil. Be shall be conducted to ensure that the site is able to support the proposed development. This assessment must be completed and submitted to OPDS staff for review. And approval prior to the recording of plans and land records. If any extensive remediation is required or if work needs to be expanded beyond the limits stated on the approved plan. A new site plan, application and inland wetland permit may be required. Four, the temporary sediment fence line on the approved plan shall be considered the limit of disturbance line. No land disturbance or construction activities shall occur on the wetland side of this limit. Five, a continuous screen of evergreen vegetation shall be maintained along the eastern property line. If any of the plantings die or are removed, they must be replanted with appropriate evergreen replacements. Six, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. The commission finds that the projects proposed to maintain the existing width. Of the eastern landscape buffer and to enhance it. With additional evergreen plantings as consistent with section 8.1-6 buffer area of the zoning regulations. The commission finds that the sidewalk on eastern side of Flanders Road. That was installed as a condition of previous site plan approval. satisfies the requirements of section 8.3-2 furnished sidewalks of the zoning regulations. The planning commission finds that the site plan meets the intent of zoning regulations, including sections 9.5-4. Site plan objectives of the zoning regulations. Is there a second? A second. Moved in second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then we'll vote on the motion. All those that approve the motion, say aye.
Aye.
There any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, commission. Thanks for your time.
But with your.
Thank you very much, commission, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is SIT 20-01 Groton Consolidated Middle School Sign, 185 Fort Hill Road. Is the applicant here to make his presentation?
Hello, this is Amy Samuelson. I'm the architect at the SLAM Collaborative, representing the Groton Middle School Project. And with me tonight is Jason Williams from Malone and McBroom, SLR Civil Engineering Firm. And Rick Norris just had some computer troubles and I believe he's calling in. I don't know if you can see him. Okay. So I think Rick wanted to kick us off and then. I'm if I'm able to share my screen, I'll do that now.
Hello? Hello?
Hi, Rick, you're on.
Hi. Okay, thanks, folks. I apologize, my computer is obviously working too hard today. So it decided it wanted to shut down. I'd like to thank if if you're ready to hear what I have to say, I'd like to go forward. I've never done it on the phone before, so.
I think I think so. They introduced our project, so we're up.
Yep, okay. I I appreciate the opportunity to come come before the commission again. It's nice to see you all. We had talked earlier about coming back to you with the sign for the middle school. I know we had gone through the ZBA and got some approvals on some variances. We also addressed the concerns of your letter to the zoning board of appeals. I also have with me tonight Amy Samuelson from SLAM, who's the designer. And we have Jason Williams, who's with Malone and McBroom. And is an expert in the placement of signs and that traffic sort of thing. So to so to address your concerns in the letter. To the ZBA, you asked about combining signs. We went to great lengths with the state and talked with them many times. We thought we were making some headway. We turned out not to be on that. We talked with the building, local building official and zoning officer about positioning of the Sutton Park sign. It turns out that he made a determination and as soon as I can get my computer back on, I could read the email if necessary. But it had determined that's a park sign and within the park. And that sign is being moved to the sidewalk area, which Amy and Jason will show you on the plan. And we've had a new one made that meets the new sign requirements of of the town or that new policy. So the the variance included. A digital sign that's slightly larger than than allowed. You know, three colors versus the two on the display and. The overall size of the sign, which which again is is very much smaller than the one that's there for grass tech. And on the opposite corner, so I'll let those folks go into that sort of detail. We did, I feel, do our homework in this matter. We chased this thing around. We actually went to three hearings at the ZBA. So hopefully we could answer any questions you folks may have. And I'd like to turn it over to. To Amy and Jason at this point and let them go through their presentation. And I'll be available to answer any questions or make additional input. So thank you very much. It looks like the computer is coming back up, so hopefully I'll join you on that shortly.
Thanks, Rick. So as Rick mentioned, this sign, it has. Um, so as Rick mentioned, uh, this sign, it has been, um, granted a few variances as required by the Z B A. Um, but we're very happy with, um, how it's turning out. And hope that you see it that way as well. Uh, the sign is going to be placed on the western side of the Grasso Tech access driveway along, uh, Route one or Fort Hill Road. And it, it's been intentionally placed, uh, in line with, but directly opposite the El Agroso sign. Uh, so that it's set, um, uh, evenly spaced and, and easy to, to see. And we do have some rendering perspectives that allow you to see what it'll look like when it's placed, uh, on the site. I'll go into that next. Um, I did share, uh, while Rick was talking an image of the, uh, the intended signage design. Uh, the sign will be approximately eight feet wide and five and a half feet tall. Uh, as Rick mentioned, the opposite side of El Agroso driveway has the sign for El Agroso Tech. And that one is actually fifteen or so feet wide. So this is, um, you know, almost half as small. And, uh, that one is eight feet tall. So this is at five and a half feet. Um, smaller than the one that is existing on that site. Um, we do intend to have a sign base with stone reminiscent of the stone walls on the Groton Middle School. Site in front of the building, um, and then a digital display, uh, on, uh, two sides, a double sided digital display to, um, allow the school to place announcements and other, um, necessary information. So with that, um, and because I know you've already seen this package, I'm going to move to the sign analysis. And perhaps Jason, you want to speak to these?
Yeah, sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, uh, thank you, everybody. My name is Jason Williams. I'm a licensed landscape architect in principle with my loan and Mac Broome. Uh, Amy brought me into the project because one of the things that I do is wayfinding signs for cities and municipalities all over New England. And really the, the main component of this is we've got this entrance and exit for Grasso away. And boy, the state sign for the test tech school is a monster. And so because of its mass, it takes ownership of this entrance and exit. And so we needed to develop a sign and place it in the proper location for the Groton Middle School. So that it would also have equal ownership of this entrance and exit. And the location, the size, all really comes down to the user experience on Route one. Whether you're coming eastbound or westbound, how do you determine if you're headed in the right direction? Even if you can't read the font on either one of these signs. And so we feel that we, by placing the sign equidistant from both curb lines on the western side of the roadway. Very similar to the Grasso Tech sign, we're helping to provide equal ownership of this entrance and exit, uh, coming out of the roadway. Not only that, the Grasso sign, as Amy mentioned, is fifteen feet wide. Well, we can't build a fifteen foot wide sign. But what we can do is build a smaller sign and add some landscaping, uh, to the sides of it. So by having some, uh, uh, different sized boxwood plantings on each end and then replicating the Loriot P ground cover as a base plane for our sign, we're mimicking the same vegetation on the other side of the roadway. Because what we don't want to do is we don't want this to look like, well, here's the L T Grasso side and here's the middle school side. We want them to really merge together, which is why we are, uh, doing a similar base, although ours is stone to the Grasso sign. They're both digital. And really the only distinguishing factor besides the size is the colors, um, between the fonts or the sign panels on each of the signs. So we really feel that, you know, typically you would put your new sign on top of or next to the, uh, Grasso Technical School sign, but we couldn't do that. And we really feel that this is a really, really good compromise, extremely user friendly from a way for finding, uh, standpoint and really fits into the character of this intersection. Uh, as part of this project, as you'll see, we have a dashed outline. Uh, that is an existing shade tree, which, uh, we need to remove. We need to do this for a couple of reasons. One, it's a very, very large mass. And by having that large mass over our sign, coupled with the fact that you can see there's a, a myriad of vertical poles adjacent to our sign. The poles plus the trunk plus the canopy creates one giant mass. And so the middle school sign will get completely lost. And when there's foliage on this canopy, it's going to completely shade out the sign. So by removing the tree, we're giving the user, uh, the vehicular user who's heading eastbound the ability to not only see both signs, but also see the roadway in the distance. So coming up on the signal, seeing the signs and seeing a little bit of the roadway of where you're entering up Grasso, uh, gives the user enough time to move from his accelerating accelerator pedal over to his brake, hover the brake, see where he's going, depress the brake, slow down and identify if this is the right turn that they need to make.
Thank you, Jason. So I, uh, would like to open it up for questions or any discussion, um, or allow you to, to, you know, ask us to provide more detail if necessary.
All right. We'll go to us town staff first and then open it up to commission for questions. Does the staff have any, uh, report on this application?
Uh, we did have a, a free staff review in the, um, in the packet. Uh, basically the sign meets the variance requirements and the other requirements of the zoning regulations. So we really don't have any, um, any issues with the sign. Um, I think by adding the stone, it's sort of relates to the, to the stone on the, um, on the school site. So it's sort of an identifying item for the, for the sign. Um, I did, um, notice or just realize that they were removing that tree tonight. So maybe they can actually plant another tree someplace along that frontage, just as a replacement for that tree that they're removing. A shade tree along that frontage somewhere. And other than that, we don't have any items.
Okay. At least I finally understood what those funny lines meant on the picture. I couldn't figure out what they were before. Right. I'll open it up to, uh, commissioners and if they have any concerns with the application, uh, start with you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I mean, I, 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 I will, uh, remind everyone that, that the, the original sign we also didn't like. And that one went through zoning board of appeals and that's why it's the way that it is. I, I'm, I'm disappointed with this whole thing. I don't like it at all. I don't like the tree coming down. I don't like flashing signs, the multiple colors. I think it cheapens the whole site. Uh, I think that a sign on the exit and a sign on the entrance to the same facility don't, doesn't make any sense. Uh, what else? I don't know what. It just seems like putting the signs together would have made a lot more sense. Uh, that's it. I, I would say that probably we should have a sign that looks just like this one on the other side, but it's too big, but that's me. That's it. I'm disappointed. That's all. Thank you.
Hal, do you have any comments?
Oh, boy. Yes. So, yes, um, Michael was right on target about what we all had a problem with was the original sign. In fact, I made a point about saying if we're going to approve this sign, the, the Grasso Tech sign, then this is going to be our school signs. You understand that because we're not going to have lots of different signs. And now here we are proposing trying to put a different sign on the other side. Understand what I'm complaining about. Let me get back to the architect. I think you did a fine job doing what you were told to do. And in this case, um, I think that aspect. There's, there's two ways to use an architect. One is to ask what to do and the other one is to tell what to do. And in this case, you were kind of told. Nice job of it. I am having, I, I guess I need to get back to Rick and say, tell me about what's going on at the state that makes this so hard. I don't understand. The state legislature didn't meet and decide that we shouldn't have a combined sign. So why is this so difficult? Ricky, still with us?
Uh, let's see where he is.
He lost his computer, maybe. He's.
Okay.
No, I gotta, I gotta promote him.
Okay. Yeah, I got.
I can't hear him now.
You're there, Rick?
Okay. Up. So, so to tell you what the process was, um, Arcadis, our owner's representative, had also worked as a project manager on the Grasso Tech sign. So we did have some familiarization with their staff, talked to them about that. They seemed to be cooperative at the beginning. Uh, it obviously has to go through numerous things. So it had to go through their PM there. We got to the, uh, principal or the superintendent of, of the, uh, these schools, because you have a separate superintendent. The discussion went on for a little bit where we tried to get, uh, onto that same sign. Basically after the conversation, after a couple of conversations that died and they were not, uh, communicative anymore about doing that. So even though they said they like to be good neighbors, uh, it was, we were unable to get a, a combination sign, if you will. So we're, and, and I know there was a comment made previously about Cutler School, about the size of the sign at Cutler School. It would be a similar sign as Cutler School and the other new schools. Uh, so I, you know, a kind of a loss to explain anything further than that. You know, we tried to do our due deals diligence. We did make the contacts we needed. We worked hard with the, not only the Z B A, but the staff on this and particularly, uh, the, the building official and the zoning officer. So we're at a point where our hands are tied now.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about zoning on this thing. We're, we're talking about having a sign that makes any sense at all. When we had a problem with it to begin with. Now you say this is the principal of Grasso Tech that doesn't want to.
No, it's a superintendent of the trade schools. He's higher than the principal.
Okay. What? This is a guy at a desk. I don't understand how he is empowered to screw up our town.
He's empowered to do what he has. They have an easement on that property, right? They have an approved sign. It was approved by the planning commission. They don't technically have to modify that sign to my understanding.
No, they don't have.
So, so, so we tried, we tried to get there and have those discussions and we ran into a dead end ultimately. I, I don't know what else to tell you.
How much of an easement does he have? Does he have the entire area?
He has an easement that crosses to almost where this sign was. And we did put a mockup. You know, we used a piece of plywood to put a mockup there, kind of to move it around to take a look at it. But actually his easement, uh, extends beyond the driveway to just short of where that sign, the middle school sign is shown. So he had an easement for that whole driveway, which was kind of a large easement to provide for that, since they already had a, a driveway in there, if you will.
Just for, just for the record, Rick, his name is what?
Oh, I, I don't, I'm not sure. I'd have to, I could get back to you with what the name is.
Okay.
I, I, I know and I'm just drawing a blank on it right now. So.
For our point, this is, to me, it's something that we want to follow with one. I see where your hands are tied because he said no. But his reason for it is based on, on what he figures the Grasso Tech is sacrosanct because they're a hundred percent funded for, by the state and we're only, how much?
You look at the schools they build, they're a whole lot more elaborate than the schools that we as the communities.
I know. This, this makes no sense.
I, I, I understand and agree with you wholly.
So I think we need to, I, I'm not done messing with that aspect of it at this point. Um, so just drop this because there's a guy who says no. Unless he's, unless he's the governor, I'm, I'm not okay with it.
Okay.
Get the governor to say no, then I'm, I guess I'll have to live with it. But, um, that's, that's the level I would think of getting to. With respect to, if in fact, let's, let's cover it just in case we can't fix this, is the, the, looking at the, the new sign. If nothing else, it should try to mirror the other side. I mean, this is a campus. We're so proud of having this campus. And so it should look like two signs of kind of the same thing. And the existing giant sign is a, that's a concrete base. Is that right?
Yeah, it looks like a prefab base.
It is a concrete base with a big blue metal box on top, half of the block, electric sign, half of the boxes. So if we're going to put another sign on the other side, it seems to me it should be a concrete base with a blue box on top. However, you want to construct that, make it a little longer, make it a little wider, but it should.
We, we, we can't do anything with the size, Hal. We, where we've exceeded the sign on the new regulations, that previous sign that was approved fell under the older regulations, obviously, because it's so much bigger than what we have. And all that was included in the regulations last time was the top portion. Now they include the whole portion, the whole sign, including the base. So we're operating not only at a disadvantage with the state, but also at a disadvantage with the regulation change. I, you know, it's.
That's, that's our regulation.
Yes, that's, that's correct. That's our regulation.
Okay. So that's one we could waive in this case because we have this ridiculous situation.
Well, we'd have.
I'm not saying make it the, the same size.
I understand.
Something that size. But I do want to see a blue box on top of a concrete base to make it look like it's the same campus.
What, what, what do you mean by a blue box?
Well, take a look at the Grasso Tech sign. It's.
So you want something that says Groton Middle Schools with delighted letters behind it? Is that what you're talking?
Frankly, if that's our standard in this town for this, then I'd have to say yes, maybe it's smaller. But, uh, you know, every aspect of this comes out crazy because you're not going to duplicate that look as you say here.
Right.
But at least it's a blue box. You know, it's on top of a concrete base and not something else entirely.
Same. So if I can just, um, add a, a little information, I, I believe that the box on top of their concrete sign is a gray metal color. And they have the blue text that says Grasso, otherwise they have silver letters. Um, so for Groton, we were going to use, um, just silver letters on the stone and a gray metal box around the digital sign. So the gray metal box on top of the, um, the pedestal would be similar.
And, and the notice board, the, uh, digital portion is probably about the same square footage, although it's longer and, and narrower than the square footage on that side. So that's the way they're going to announcements these days. And they're there for a certain period of time and, and Jason can reflect on that, on how those letters are changed and what the periodicity is. So they're safe for drivers. Uh, and that sort of thing. But if it's a, if it's a color issue, if it's a lack of stone issue, those are certainly things that we can address.
It was a baseline. I just have to say that the base should look like the other base. The top should look like the other top. So you're saying it is the same color. I mean, it should be the identical color. If this is a campus and it is, then it should look like. If this is a campus and it is, then it should look like pieces of the same campus. It'll be confusing enough to have a sign on the right side of the road that talks about a school that's on the left side of the road. Versa, that's already confusing enough.
Did Jason, did you show them, show that triangular entryway type thing?
Yeah, I understand that you, that you can see both signs.
Yeah.
Actually, that's, that's going to be confusing because if I'm walking into something with flanking signs, I'm kind of assuming they're saying a similar thing.
So I mean, I could touch on that and I think I did at the very beginning, right? How, I mean, the best option would be to incorporate our sign onto the tech sign, but we cannot do that. So we either have two options. We find a place for a sign or we don't do a sign. We don't want to do a similar sign on the same side of the roadway where we'd have these two monstrous monolithic digital panels competing with each other. We definitely don't want to put it on the island where we've got some safety issues. It doesn't want to go on the other side of the road because then it lacks any ownership of the entrance. It really, the only place for it is on the other side of the road. So if we put it on the other side of the road, how can we incorporate it to the Grasso sign? We can do that by matching distances off of the curb lines of Fort Hill Road and Grasso Terrace. We can match the mass of it. Although we can't do that with the signage, we could add landscaping that does beef, beef up the length a little bit. We got to match the colors, so the silver and then the base. I think one of the things that you said, which is interesting is maybe we want to look at not doing a stone base and do a precast concrete base that does match. That, that is really going to help to tie them together.
And, and the distance between the signs is in the neighborhood of a hundred feet. So it's not like one's on top of the other one. And by, and I don't know if you drove by when that piece of plywood was put in as a mockup. We put that in, the visibility was that you could see the plywood, piece of plywood where the school sign would be. And you could also see the Grasso Tech sign in the background. So neither one of those obscured the view of, of the other side. Confusion, I don't know. We have signs, you know, every, everywhere. I'm not saying that's necessarily a good thing. But from a safety perspective, it didn't look like that was necessarily an issue. So we have to make sure that, you know, they follow the right regulations, what they post on the sign, how often it turns over. I mean, I think there's an issue with the high school sign because it rolls, which it shouldn't do, which should come up and be steady and then change to the next set of of data or information, if you will. So those are things that we need to work with, with the school before we turn this over. And just kind of for information, this is the last thing to complete before the project's done and turned over to the, we'll actually turn over the board of it before we finish this part of it.
Does that mean we're not going to have anything on the Fitch side, Fitch High School?
No, we have something on the Fitch side. And if you drive up there, we have a little red and white sign on a pole that says middle school here. You get up to the driveway.
No, I'm sorry.
There's a wayfinding sign. And the board of ed doesn't want to sign at the entryway for Fitch because it's a bus entrance.
No, I was, I was talking about up on Long Point Road. At Fitch's entrance.
Right. Right. Long Point Road. The board of ed is not going to put a sign up there for uh, teachers, for parents, because the parents, the way the project was designed, the parents here come up the Grasso Tech entrance. And the buses enter the other way. And there's actually a sign saying buses only between, when you get into the building, buses all ends in the parking lot. Buses only between certain hours.
That's right. So evening, evening meetings, parents can go through that.
Yeah.
There's won't be any signage.
Right.
While I'm kind of voicing this for the Sutton Park. So if I drive up to this place looking for Sutton Park, what I'm going to be looking for is a sign.
Right, right now, if you look at the drawing, there's a, there's a sign for Sutton Park, which you'll show you.
Yes.
There's also, there's also a wayfinding sign plan that OPDS is, is put together. I did talk to the, uh, director of Parks and Rec. He was fine with this sign here because it's, it's more of an entryway into the park, if you will. And there'll be two wayfinding signs, one going west, one going east on Route One in the state right away as wayfinding signs that match our wayfinding sign plan, if you will. It just says Sutton Park this way coming the other direction will probably say Sutton Park and Quonix Plains Park with arrows directing.
Where, where would the wayfinding signs be?
They will be in, along the road in the right way, probably a hundred feet or so down from this side.
So you, you're supposed to know that you're supposed to turn right where you've got the two different school signs and that's Sutton Park. As opposed to having a sign that says Sutton Park in a combined sign.
Yeah, this is, this is Jason again from Mylona MacBroom. How we looked at that, but then we thought, oh, boy. Now we've got three conflicting elements at this entrance. The existing location of Sutton Park sign is you kind of miss it. It's far back from the road. It's got that little, uh, stone planter around it. So how, so the thought was how do we get people into Sutton Park? Originally, the, uh, one option was to put it at the actual driveway entrance into Sutton Park, which is just to the southeast. Uh, there you go.
Yeah, it's way far.
Yeah. So that's, that's the real entrance into Sutton Park. So having a sign at that corner location right there would have been an option. So if you're driving, whether eastbound or westbound on Route One, a hundred, 200 feet away from the intersection, you would see a small DOT style sign that says Sutton Park to the right or Sutton Park to the left. You get up to the intersection. By the time you get to the intersection, you can see down Grasso and you'd be able to see a sign. We, uh, the other nice thing about this is the sign placement here would create a nice triangle between our other, um, entrance signs. We talked with Parks and Rec about this and they did not like it. They wanted the sign where we're currently showing it, which is up, uh, the roadway a little bit.
Which
Really along the pedestrian path. And I think one of the main reasons for that is because of the pedestrian connection or the connection to, uh, the facilities across Route One.
And, and that certainly doesn't preclude putting a wayfinding sign by the driveway to Sutton Park off of the, the main driveway. I mean, so, I mean, realistically, the park is not used by out of towers, if you will. It's been primarily a neighborhood park. The folks built skateboard park there. It's used by a lot of skateboarders and local basketball players that come to the basketball courts to play. So it's not like some large amusement park or there's not even games there like they have at Aquonic Plains. So the whole issue of this particular location sign, I'm, I'm a little, you know, a little taken aback of, because I've been in this town since 1970 and I just don't understand sometimes.
I thought the kind of whole idea, well, among the ideas for our our, let's say parks or fields was to have a unified spread of an enormous number of fields stretching from the high school to Quonix and Clodchester, we'll make that into an extra field, I imagine. That we can be a destination for competitions.
Right. So
So Sutton Park would become one of those places.
For skateboarding.
No. There's a baseball field, there's a football field and it's actually available for another baseball field. It's just that it's, needs another few field.
Well, and the state has talked about doing some repairs to those fields in the back by elevating, doing some field, some fill to get them out of the wetlands, if you will.
Right.
So yeah, I could see a future, uh, use for that as far as fields, since the big pushes on additional fields in there.
In which case you'd want to drive there. You'd be coming off of 95, looking for ways to get into it.
Well, and what, and what the little wayfinding sign has is a parking symbol, right? So there's limited parking there, but there would be a parking symbol on that sign and with the directions of the park.
The wayfinding sign says someplace ahead of Fitch, Middle and Grasso Tech. There'll be a sign that you want to turn right to get to Gr- to park. I guess that makes some sense. Especially if it says next right, because otherwise you're going, you think you're going the wrong place.
Right. I mean, we'll have an arrow and we'll have the parking thing, the indicators, parking available there for that part.
And this, that will be part of our unified.
And folks that are, and folks that come in that direction are using the fields that we've, by the way, came up with two extra fields that we didn't have with the other schools now will know how to enter the middle school to get to those middle school fields.
I guess I would relent on that. For the time being, I, I, I just I'll pass on to my fellow commissioners. I'm just not going to be able to say, okay, with bringing this sign there. If we have to put it there, then so be it. But as I say, I'm, I'm not ready to relent on that. And I would want to see that sign in as many ways as possible look as if it was cut from the same mold as the giant Grasso Tech sign. Including if you need to be at this location, ask for a waiver of some of it so we can better match it. Right now on the concrete base is nothing but an address. So for us to put the name of the school down there is already looking pretty wonky.
Well, and you have to understand the address is not there. The address is a Grotten Long Point Road address. So
I'm not saying
I mean, it is, it is wonky, but it is what it is. If you need a reasonable size sign based on the regulations, put the announcements on. You know, instead of going out there and doing the plastic number and letter thing. And you try and put the name up there where that is. You're, you're out of space. You're, you're physically out of space because of the regulation. You wouldn't be able to put anything up there that you could read at that point.
Right. I, I guess I want to, want to hear what commissioners have to say about
Understand.
The potential for waiving the size because we've already shot ourselves in this one. And I don't want to make it, keep making it worse to get around what we've got.
Alright, I understand.
For, just to get down to the technical though, for the, for the screen, what's the resolution of that screen? I'm hoping it's a whole lot better than the Grasso screen, which I can barely read.
I don't really like that screen. We haven't bought anything yet. So we'll, we'll look at that certainly with, uh, you need the right size font. You need a reasonable font that you can drive by and observe it and see what's going on at the school.
Yeah, just, it's just that the resolution, the number of elements on it.
I understand. Yep. I agree. Certainly.
And I'll stop venting. Pass it back.
Anything else, Hal?
Not for now.
Barbara?
Hi. Yes, Jeff and commissioners. I find myself in agreement as I usually do with Hal, uh, on most things. I would like to see it mirror the Grasso sign. I also think the, the way it looks right now, that the name of the school is totally lost. Uh, it's, it's, you just can't read where it says Grotten Middle School. I don't think anyone will see that. They'll see the big digital screen, but they won't see the name of the school. So if anything, if you put the, if, if you put Grotten Middle School on this concrete slab that looks like the Grasso slab, I think it would be much more visible. You'd have the, the digital screen at top and the concrete, uh, whatever it is, base, but says Grotten Middle School. But as I'm seeing it, Grotten Middle School on the proposed sign, it just gets lost. I know it looks great there, but it does not look great on those, uh, on the, but, uh, I don't know what you call it.
On the stones or whatever, the stone facing or whatever.
Right. I, it just totally gets lost. You don't see it at all.
Okay. Well, we think certainly.
I think you mean in the rendering. So we'll, we'll have to make sure that it's a nice contrast to the background color.
I'd rather even see instead of the stones, I mean, quite frankly, the, the stones matching the school. I mean, they're so far apart. I don't, you know, it's a nice thought, but I don't really see much relevance. I'd rather see it again, be more unified and be like the Grasso sign and have that, that ugly, if you will, concrete base with Grotten Middle School on it rather than having it on the stones where it gets lost. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. I think I agree with, I always love to hear Hal's detailed analysis and I agree with Barbara too on this. I guess visually, and I wish that they would mirror each other more, but on the other hand, I don't know. I'm, but anyway, I appreciate, um, it's a very difficult situation and thanks over all you commissioners for your comments.
Kevin?
I don't know what I could add, Jeff. I mean, but here's my point. Here's my only point is, you know, um, working for the world's biggest technology companies on a product, we would argue about this stuff for hours, the same way it was ad nauseam and all the different influences. At some point you get to it and said, this is as good as, as we're going to get. And we're close. I'm not saying it's it, but we're pretty close. So I think in some ways, you know, we have to turn it over to Rick and say, get it as good as you can get and, and we got it. That's all we can do. So without being trying, without being a wimp, that's what I would say. Thank you.
I didn't realize the sign would be discussion. So involved.
Signs at the time.
But I tend to agree that, that the sign, the Grotten Middle School part of it looks like it's insignificant and all you want is a big computer display. Who cares whether they're hiring somebody or not. I don't understand why they need all that, the digital display to begin with. But the, the name of the school has to have more emphasis. You know, it's got to be either higher up or bigger letters, or maybe the whole thing should be tilted vertically. You can't have a horizontal sign to copy. Why don't we go vertical?
That's the regulation. We're allowed six feet. We're allowed six feet in height by regulation.
Well, maybe we, you should be requesting a change to the regulation. Maybe they're not realistic or you know, this type of is a commercial sign in the commercial areas should be different. One you might want to put up in a residential.
And this is a GR, green area too. So there's specific regulations attached to that.
What? You have to have a green sign? Yeah, but I mean, what's the purpose of the sign?
Purple sign.
Hmm. I mean, it looks like it, it's advertising something other than the name of the school.
I understand.
And that's not really the most important point.
So, so, so what, so what I'm hearing so far is you'd like some changes to the sign. And I guess as a matter of course.
For visibility and attractiveness.
I, I understand. And I would guess I would ask if those would be technical issues, uh, to the staff, would those things kind of fall under technical or would we need to come back with another sign because?
The discussion that we're listening to is major. The discussion that we're listening to is major.
I understand.
Not technical.
Well, but if you don't like the stone and you like the flat.
I don't care.
Concrete base, is that technical or is that, you know?
Oh, I would.
A ma- a major issue.
That to me is insignificant.
Yeah, so.
The visual view of the sign and and its ability to to communicate, that's what's important.
Understand.
Looks like we're not, the sign ought to be addressing a communication of the school, not the advertisement part. That because you can't read those and if you're driving fast, the text is small. In fact, it's probably dangerous.
Well, you shouldn't. You shouldn't be driving fast. It's twenty-five mile an hour zone until you get up.
Pretty fast to drive to read small little letters. I mean.
May I address the that? I'm thinking that the school is interested in having the announcements. And it's not an advertisement or anything like that, but it is it is the opportunity for the school. To provide to the parents um announcements for relevance of that week.
You, how many people in the town are going to be that are have students there are going to pay attention to it or need the communication? I mean, it's a whole large population. You're busing people to here. So.
Well, this is not the bus entrance, but it is, you know, it is a communication tool. So I can't speak.
There are more people going to the school than would be passing by this road.
Right. I I mean, I think we would need the the school to address what they intend to put on the. Uh digital display, but this was their request.
Yeah, I understand that, but it shouldn't be the primary purpose of the sign. And why don't they just send out emails to everybody? People probably more pay more attention to their phone than they will be to a flashing sign on the road.
But to but to your point, Jim, I don't have any children in school. I haven't for years. I read the sign in front of Rochester every time I go by. To see if there's some sort of event going on that may be of interest. They do more um in this school will allow them to do more. In the way of presentations and that sort of thing than previously allowed. We have a black box theater in that building. So if they want to do a presentation, do a showing, do a whatever. That would be announced on that sign. And it's not just necessarily parents or students, if you will. So it it is a means of communications and announcing what's really going on in our educational system there.
So you really have two signs you want.
Jeez, we're having enough trouble with one sign, sir.
Oh, I mean, you're to me, it you need a sign to say this is the way to get to the school.
Understand.
And what you want to say is you want to have something not related to that. There's nothing to do with the school. It's just.
No, that's not true. It has everything to do with the school.
It's in the building, but it's not the it's not.
It's it's a student, student presentation, student things. I'm not saying bring in.
A big sign by town hall with all the things going on in the schools.
No one's that that interested in town hall.
No, but I mean, it's on the same street. And they'd go by reading it if they knew the sign was there and they were interested in it.
I I think we we can't really talk to the to the um. Content of what's going to be on the sign. We we will need to have one of the administrators for the school district. Help us with that.
Well, I I'm more concerned with with where the rotten middle school, how that.
Yep.
Task is stands out and gets people's attention.
Understand.
And the fact that you have a much smaller sign. For the middle school than you do for. The Grasso sign. So how do you compensate for that?
Well, and that's what.
Don't want to copy. You don't want to copy the other one. You want to have something different that's eye catching.
Well, that's the reason for the uh tall plantings on either side of it is to give it a similar. Um breadth and and um area as what the Grasso is across the way. Um and Jason really did a good job of helping us with those plantings and choosing the location of the sign. So that it's just in line with and complimentary to the El Agroso sign. Uh without, you know, overpowering and being that same size. Uh because as you know, it it we did have to go through ZBA even to get this size approved. So we're we're over the limitations that are within zoning regs as it is.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
We have limits, but it's got it. There should be some other way that can get people's attention and to read it than just copy. Yes.
Well, hopefully the content of what's on the digital sign will also, you know, that that's what will also draw people's attention.
I think the reality of what we put on digital signs is to let people know that something they already know about is happening now. You don't drive by and think, oh, look, they're putting on Bye Bye Birdie again on June thirteenth. That's too much information already. You're not going to get there as you drive by or stop by the light. If you're looking at at it that much. Then you're running over some pedestrian. There's just too much information.
Hopefully you're at the traffic light.
But.
Got stuck in the traffic light.
Traffic light, make you look at it, but otherwise you're gonna be, it's still me looking at you. And that's kind of when we see things, but you're not looking for a whole lot of information. It's the kind of thing you'd normally have on a quick little poster. Now we do it electronically. So we're kind of overshooting how much we like to put on these things. And I I'm, I'd think I'd be much happier if the the size of the screen. Was condensed. Somebody said turn it vertically so that you have some room on the right hand side of the panel. So it again starts to mimic the Grasso textile. Then in fact, you could actually come much closer to it that way. With a smaller, much better screen. Uh the actual size of let if the resolution is good. The the size of lettering can actually get quite small, I believe, if it's backlit, if it's lit like that. So you kind of actually get a bu- bunch of information on there. Because I don't think you're ever going to get anywhere with this, which has the amount of screen size. Being what five times the size of the font of the words Groton Middle School. If you had much smaller, much smaller screen, you could put rotten middle school one on top of the other. It would start to mimic the Grasso tech sign. Still make it a little bit larger than and get a waiver from us for the size. And get a little closer to what we're trying to do here, which was show off the name of the school, not. What show is going to be going on or when you should get your registration in.
So I I I have a question on on process. Uh it was my understanding that to vary from the regulations, we had to go to the ZBA. Now you're saying you could provide a waiver. I don't know that that's uh regulatorily possible. Um and I believe we'd find ourselves back with the ZBA.
That's correct.
That's probably a question for staff.
That's correct. There's no waivers that you can give. It would be have to go back to ZBA. Um.
Okay, we. If in fact it comes with a note from us saying. We understand that the situation, but we are trapped now due to the oversized sign that we're already stuck with.
Well, I I I guess what I'd like to hear is whether the commission is going to do anything with this or whether our marching orders should we go back and come back with another design.
Well, if you if you ask me my opinion of digital signs, I'd like to ban them.
I I understand that, but that's not today's.
Okay, Rick, I was talking.
I'm sorry.
I think they are distracting. I think it sets a poor tone for the entire community. I don't want to drive down Long Hill Road and Fort Hill Road and see digital signs in front of every business. And I don't know how we can say no to lots of businesses who want to put up three color digital signs. All over the town when we're putting them up ourselves. And I know that. That's probably going to go nowhere, but I would rather just not have a digital sign at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Oh, just that I haven't heard anyone weigh in on cutting down a mature tree to be replaced by a. New street tree. I just would like. If it could be um trimmed in some way, but I would prefer to see a mature tree remain. Ultimately, thank you.
Okay.
And and Barbara, thank you as well. I agree with you.
I agree. I don't like digital signs either.
I think they're terrible.
I think they're dangerous. Unless they're used in places like billboards, I guess. Those are real attention getters because they're bright. But I just think something has to be done with with the text, the text part of the sign to make it. More legible, easier to read. And it gets the attention. I would think. Placing them in a vertical format might make more sense. And maybe we have to look at revising the. The requirements.
One of the um. My own, I guess I'm unmuted. One of the regulations that you're looking at. With with the stuff that um we were going to look at tonight, but obviously we're not, is um. Changing some of those sign regs and one of them was actually to. To go to eight feet for a sign in the GR district instead of six feet. So um. There are some changes that are proposed for signs in GR districts. Because there was a little confusion when the other sign, when the other regulations were written that um. The green district signs were basically for open space areas um. Places that just hiking trails and that and we weren't thinking at that point of, you know. Public parks with recreation and and things like this. So. So there are some changes proposed, but that won't happen for another couple of months.
Well, I don't know what we do with this situation where we are now because.
Right.
Listening to whatever the comments from the commission, it might be difficult to get a motion tonight passed. I don't know.
I asked staff is that I'm not quite sure where we as commission members can can go with this. Is that I think Rick's already at wit's end with the superintendent telling him he doesn't feel like doing anything about this. And how as a town do we get over that commissioner that superintendent's head? To get back to him and not have, or Rick being the guy talking to him, but have.
Oh, we got our representatives.
Have somebody who's.
But I I'm not sure what you would want to do because the Grasso tech sign is already there. Would you want to place our sign on top of that sign?
No, I would replace the top metal portion of the Grasso tech sign. As I wanted to do before they put it in place.
With what?
Long before it showed up. We were talking about this and it went nowhere and then it showed up anyway. So I'm. I'm kind of not okay with saying, well, we did it anyway, and now you're stuck with it because we already had talked about it before it showed up, months, months before it showed up. So, yes, I think you can leave the base and you leave electrical connections to it and leave everything else on there. And take the top portion, which they've already replaced once. I think they did take it away for for working on it, maybe just the electrical part. And replace that with something that makes sense for the town, not for the superintendent.
Right. And and if I may, how part of our discussion with that was we did provide them some sketches, some drawings with uh. The Groton Middle School lettering where they have their numbers or address. And that's where the kind of discussion left off. And uh. You know, sort of died at that particular point. There was several uh. Uh arrangements, if you will, of lettering underneath there. So you have the Grasso tech. You know, digital sign and you had the Grasso tech. Information on the related letters beside it. And then we had we had looked at or proposed putting. The Groton Middle School stuff on the concrete portion underneath that sign right there.
Frankly, I don't know if I'd be in favor of that because it's.
No, I know, but that's.
Weird thing too. I think what what needs to happen. Un- understandably, having been faced with this kind of situation before. What I my previous job is that the superintendent is looking to his schools. That's all he cares about.
Right, that's correct.
And we have a a bigger nut to crack that we don't care just about one school or the just the other school. And I we have to get somebody beyond him to weigh in on this, what's better for the town as opposed to. The school. This putting this a sign on the other side and leaving this one the way it is, especially with that that terrible display that they've got on their sign. Uh it doesn't serve any.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So. We rep we write to our political representatives or we must have some internal way to get through, or maybe we don't. And we just have to have the town council. Draft a letter, make a phone. It should be a phone call. It must be somebody because it really is. He's just looking at what's best for his school. And what's best for his school is just to leave things the way it is and let us. One arm and a right way.
Right.
And we should do better. So we just continue this? Is that the best we can do?
Well, I don't know whether. We have a the Seattle can have any other thoughts on how to try to make things better? Or meet some of the concerns? I don't know what rights we have to refuse. The application, or does it go to court?
Who would take us to court?
Well, it's a the school could.
Which school?
In Groton. If they want to sign, then we won't approve it. I don't know. We don't have any leg to stand on if it meets the regulations.
I don't think the the Board of Education would disagree with us. If the Board of Education disagrees with us, then then so be it. Then we'll pass whatever. Write a great app, whatever it is.
Hmm.
We we should be trying to do the right thing.
Well, what what do you think we should be doing then, Hal? I mean, passing a another motion to take some other kind of action or just having. The applicant come back with another another design.
Well, I guess there's two parts to it. preemptively, the applicant come back with another design. In case our other actions don't go anywhere, in case we the town, the town can't in any way. Get over the head of a superintendent who's doesn't care about the town.
You mean a state state superintendent you're talking about?
He's a state superintendent of schools. I that's that's a guy that's that's somebody behind a desk. He doesn't, I don't know if he's ever, you know, he probably came for a ribbon cutting and hasn't been back since.
Well, they'll probably have to go have the our senator or representative to take some action.
I suppose so. Rather than just do something to work around him. Yes, I think we should. Rather than just do something to work around him. Yes, I think we should. It'll be a permanent scar. It's not like we'll put it there and it'll be okay. It won't be okay for, for the rest of our lives. It'll be there and people will be thinking, what were you thinking of when you put this, this sign over here? So let's see if we can avoid that. And at least I'd like to say, hey, we even tried. We did give it our best and we couldn't do anything about it. We'll talk about that for the rest of our life.
So whose court is this in, if I might ask? The, the um discussions, further discussions with the state?
It's probably not in your court. Your court.
Not, not, not as the consultant, but, but just trying to gather information and take notes here as to what's the next steps because my client does wanna sign.
Yeah.
So I wanna be able to provide what's the next, what's the path to providing them a sign at this location?
So Amy, I think if I may, what I would do is, is brief my department in. And then we would talk with the town manager about how to proceed with that. I mean, it's typical of other things that we've had to do when we dealt with the state that we typically gotta run it up the flagpole and then figure out where they go from there, whether he brings in the state senator, the representatives, whatever, whether he can do some communication for the town's part. That, that's all unclear now, but we can certainly start the wheels turning.
Sounds great.
I would think, yeah. I would think you have to have somebody put some pressure on uh on our representatives and uh, and our senator.
Well, we, we gotta, we gotta identify the right place to put the pressure.
Cause if the town council writes a letter, they probably wanna go right into the circular file.
Oh, yeah.
Desk.
Oh, we understand that.
So it would require convincing our state people to put some pressure on. Unless nobody's really ever talked to the superintendent.
No, they have. Um our, our cadis has an inroad to those folks and they've talked to them frequently about state schools, which they work on. And they in fact uh were the owner's rep for the Grasso Tech School. ONG was the CM at risk for that school. So it's basically the same team. We had different people. But um he had a way into the, the lawyer and the superintendent when we got into the uh easement issue and we're working through that issue. We have got great, had great success with the help of Arcadis doing that. But this time they run, frankly, run into a dead end.
Hmm. So do you wanna talk to the town manager, Rick?
Yes, we'll, we'll take it through our circuit up to the town manager. I mean, if you folks wanted to uh do something too, I guess that's your prerogative. But I'll certainly bring, bring it up my circuit to.
I'd like, I'd like to continue this till our next meeting. If you can talk to the town manager and maybe see if you can make any any effort to.
Okay, we can, we can certainly do that. And we could uh look at the design that we have for the sign um and come in up with an alternate and bring that back to you folks also. So that would be uh something more under our control. We'll certainly work on the other one also.
So try to at least so it has, it's more attention getter maybe to.
Right. So we got, you know, kind of a two-pronged attack, if you will.
Yes, okay. So we'll leave it on our, our agenda for discussion next, at our next meeting then.
Okay.
All right.
If that's all you need us for, thank you very much for your attention and we'll have some marching orders, so we'll go off and uh address those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next subject is zoning regulation amendments. Can we, can we suspend these till next time? Or do we need a special meeting just to finish them up or just try to do a few at a time maybe?
No, what, what we'd like to do is have a special meeting um and maybe next week, just have a meeting and just finish these up so we can move them forward.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if Tuesday works next week for everybody or, or do you want us to, you know, email you or whatever?
I don't know. Most people have Tuesdays free, so don't tell you.
Keep Tuesdays empty.
Hmm.
I always just keep Tuesdays empty cuz.
Yeah, so um maybe we can set something up for next.
Tuesday's good for me.
Yeah. Why don't we try that?
And then just, just get it done, so.
Cause most of this stuff is probably more editorial than anything else.
Of it is, the rest of it is. There's a few things like signage and things like that. And if we get, if we get too much, too many issues on some topic, then we can.
And just suspend those and.
Suspend that until another time, so.
All right, why don't we do that then?
Okay, that sounds good. Okay.
All right, then moving on to uh new applications.
Uh, we do not have any new applications at this point. Deb, Deb, do we have any new applications?
We do not.
Okay.
I hope not. We can't, can't handle what we have. We have city zoning text amendment. Does staff have any comments on that for us to?
No, actually the hearing was last week and they sent it to us. Um, you know, we got it to you as soon as we could. But um it was just a, a use that was not basically allowed under, I guess, the uses that were were listed in their zoning regs. So they're actually making a new use and allowing it in the CG zone or the general commercial zone. It seemed reasonable to me, so I don't know if you had any comments on it.
Any commissioners have any comments on that?
None.
If none, we'll move on to report of report of chair. I guess our next biggest item is to continue on with our proposed road zoning regulation change for the floating zone.
Right. And so to that point, um yet another special meeting. So I think Jeff and I are working on the, the matrix categories, trying to list out all of the concerns that we've heard. And um as we discussed last week, point you to the spot in the regulations where it may or may not be addressed so that you can get a level of comfort with that. Um so I think we, we're gonna send out a, a doodle poll to see what your availability is um to do it, to do yet another special meeting so we can really hash out um where we're going with this reg.
I, I, I think we, uh, I think we're sort of losing sight of what we're supposed to be doing. In that we should end up with a regulation that isn't specific just for one application. It ought to be for if this one didn't go through, we shouldn't be making the rule, the regulation applicable only to this regulation. It ought to be a general, more general thing of what can be done in the area.
And, and I know when, when we've been working. We keep that in, we do keep that in mind that, you know, what, what happens if this proposal goes away? I mean, we want this regulation to work for this site. And so I know when we're working with Jeff Davis, that's definitely our mindset is to make sure that this thing will work for respler homes or, you know, on the off chance that they don't it doesn't work for them, it would work for the next developer.
Or, or if we, yes, cuz it, there might be other things or you know, their, their application might have to be, or what their plan is right now may have to be revised for other reasons. You know, like he said that if they don't rent the apartments out in the first phase, then they're gonna sit there for a while. So it has to support that type of happening. So rather than so be so tied up in knots over nine hundred and thirty-one units. And that's what's, I think, that everybody upset with. That it should be more generic there than something that's so specific. This is just an example. And uh the only other thing I had was we met, tried to have a meeting of the uh Regional Planning Commission last night with uh no quorum, so no decisions. And the, not really too much uh came up from what other communities are working with. Ledger is, I guess, the only one that sounded like something that was oddball and trying to come up with regulations for having uh other types of activities in agricultural uh lands, which I think we have put some changes into effect, or they're in the changes proposed on how to control that. It sounds like they wanted more detail than what we're talking about. And I didn't have anything else. Uh report a commission. Do any of the commissioners have anything?
I'd like to know what the status, if any, is of the short-term rental issues. The Airbnb, if you will, types of things.
You know, and, yeah, I, I know the council held a meeting a month or two ago and, and I don't know what the next steps are, but find out for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that seems to be a hot, hot subject for everybody. Anybody else have anything? Report as staff?
Special meetings.
And when you get the list, you're gonna send that out to everybody, so people can start thinking.
Send it to you first. Exactly. Well, yeah, you'll have that in advance of the special meeting.
I don't mind. I just get frustrated at Microsoft. They keep changing the rules and make, making a simple thing more complex. Oh, they, they're terrible.
Were, were things easier when we had a separate planning commission and zoning commission?
Yes. Definitely.
We warned them.
They're not the ones that are putting up with it.
They're hearing the consequences. Well, because some realtor thought we had too many meetings. All right. No, it has anything else in it. Entertain a motion for adjournment. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. And we'll meet next.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.